Oh, we gotta start over now.
Meeting minutes we have done.
Okay. You know what, I'm gonna abandon that and let's just go straight to some of the, let's go straight to one of the versions that, one of the more updated versions.
Not sure.
Yeah, you guys, you guys stay where you are and I'll, I'll just open up a more recent version. So the line numbers are gonna be a little bit different, so we'll have to go off of section numbers you said. So flipping back to wherever we'd have the form-based code start, let's see. About midway through the packet and the first one is thirty-five pages long, so right after page thirty-five, you'll have pages on form base. Now, what I did.
I have thirty-six or seven, I have sixty-nine pages, am I on the wrong thing?
Uh, no, you're in the right one if you've got sixty-nine.
I do.
So yeah, the first, so the first one is, if you turn the page.
Oh, got it.
The way on one of sixty-nine. Let me get caught up. Okay, we are, okay, so there shouldn't be anything in this version that you guys haven't seen except the highlighted version and the highlighted text and except for last week, we did look at the highlighted set, so if you already read through that, then scratch that, but I wanted to go through the highlighted text just to make sure you guys are comfortable with that, and then if we wanted to, we can recap on anything else that you have learned about or seen or whatever that's in this.
Want to go through the whole thing first and then we can make notes if we're gonna come back.
Yeah, just the highlighted portions of it and, and then come back to others, unless you'd rather look at starting a different way.
My problem is that sometimes we get hung up on something they can't get through at all.
Yeah.
Might as well through it all and turn back to touch on some things if we need to.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm just fine, so do you want to start just at the beginning and just go through or? Let's do it. Page two, okay, any questions for me on page two?
Are they doing transfer master rights down?
They will be, yeah, they're good, so that's actually one of the last pages, they're gonna do transfer incentives, so they're gonna do uh, one for three, every one you transfer off of open space land, you get three in a village area.
This is where I feel like it's nerve-wracking to have everything together, because how do we make sure that that doesn't get them said, like, oh, it's in, it's in the documents, right? Well, it's in the documents for Western Weaver, it doesn't associate with Ogden Valley, and because we don't want bonus, right?
Right, that's exactly right, I'll show you that section specifically, because.
Transfer instead of matching unit.
Yeah, transfer instead of matching unit, that is a term that was already in the ordinance previous to now, um, so I put a note up to the side, I've gotta go through the destination recreational resort zone, which has its own transferable development, right, program built into it, and just make sure that we're not messing with anything specifically regarding the matching units.
So with respect to that, for the resort zone. When would that be discussed? Because, you know, in light, I think that was probably established prior to the state water mandate situation, which kind of changes a lot of things.
It does, yeah, so that one was established, I want to say, just prior to Snow Basin getting entitled, so that would have been two thousand, I want to say ten or eleven.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that we've used a lot of that ordinance since then, except for two entitled Powder Mountain, however, Powder Mountain didn't have to transfer anything. Um, I think what we did was, we were in a lawsuit and we settled with Powder Mountain for the amount of density that they ultimately got, as opposed to doing any transfers at that point.
So with respect to Snow Basin, given the current circumstances, what would be the outlook towards revisiting that situation now that the state has changed their stance on?
Water, water, so Snow Basin where they've got a, they have a development agreement, so at the time that they created the development agreement, they are vested in the ordinances that exist at the time, um, and where it's an agreement, it requires both sides to agree to make changes, it's one of the things that, one of the things I like about not doing development agreements is, we can make changes to the ordinance and it applies to the property, um, everything that hasn't already been established, whereas development agreement kind of locks everyone in place for a little while and you have to work with them as opposed to just being the government and telling people to do that.
So you just said locks it in place for a little while, is there a time expiration on this?
I think there's just thirty years.
These development agreements are different depending how they agree upon. For our, our, your standard thirty years, or?
Uh, no, big projects, I, I really resist thirty years, but very big projects, we might agree for thirty years. Um, I try hard just to make sure the ordinances get adopted the way they need to be adopted, but sometimes you, it's hard to avoid working through a development agreement, for example, Nordic Valley, um, theirs is ten years with an automatic renewal of one, uh, five years after that, it's a rolling renewal of five years, unless the county sends the notice that we're not gonna renew, uh, and we have to send a notice twelve months in advance, I do stuff like that so that we can say, all right, we know we have a definitive timeline and it's within our lifespan, um, as opposed to kicking it so far out that we can't make changes. I don't know, it might be about the same, same that they probably, Powder's been, Powder Mountain actually submitted a, they, their submittal when they go into the rezon was almost exactly the same as Snow Basin's, I mean, it looked the same and, uh, and everything, so I'm, I guess it's probably about the same. Okay, good question though, um, and Snow Basin will come back at some point in time and say, hey, we don't like this part of the agreement, and we'll say, well, you're stuck unless you change what we want you to change as well, and so it gives us the chance to. Okay, page four? Or three, excuse me? Yep, I just moved the street types up into the front, um, instead of, I pulled them out of the back and moved them to the front, just to, if you're reading this like a novel, you kind of want to know what you're talking about before you get to the very end of it. Not that anybody reads it like a novel, but. Okay, uh, four, any questions on four? Five? Okay, so four and five, just to make sure everyone's clear, we added a new street type, that's the M L L R. But that really doesn't affect you guys, because M L L R is being used anywhere in the Ogden Valley right now.
Okay, well, what does it stand for?
Uh, sorry, medium-large lot residential.
And it's not being used now, but could, so medium-large?
It's, it's available for use, yes.
Medium-large lot.
Yeah, then a little bit later, we'll, we'll look at what that means, um, it basically means a twelve thousand five hundred square foot lot quarter acre, basically. So the medium, or sorry, the, um, yeah, medium-large residential lot, just lower than that is eight thousand square feet, and you got the M L L R, which is twelve thousand five hundred, and then the large lot residential, which is what you guys already have, um, in the valley, and that is the twenty thousand square feet.
I'm noticing a type of one by eighty-two.
Eighty-two?
Yeah.
Large.
Uh, it's supposed to be like that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, so you'll see that, um, M L L R street type reflected throughout. Okay, page five or page six, any questions there? Um, five is just that new column.
All the new column.
Yeah, sorry folks online, I'm working from a paper copy, but trying to navigate the online copy as well, oh. Just so you guys are aware, I don't think this was in the previous, uh, what you guys are looking at here. Um, I'm, I'm removing mid-block alley from the street types, it's really not a street, it's alley, um, so it's uh, takeover, it's actually gonna be in this section here, block alley, so I'm suggesting.
Number five.
Mm-hmm, I'm suggesting we move that to the end, we already put standards for mid-block alleys in there, and it just fits better that way, it's, it's more.
You just want to move it.
Yeah, clerical change. So it'll go, one of the last sections in the street regulating section discusses what a mid-block alley is, the frequency at which mid-block alleys need to be established, I'll get after it.
But you're not changing the language, you're just moving it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, just move it. And once we get down to mid-block alley, I'll show you some of the changes that isn't in the packet that you're looking at, that Western Weaver will be taking action on, and you guys can give me a knee-jerk reaction if, if it's something you don't like.
Two or six.
Uh, seven, mostly just admin changes, uh, organizing things so that they flow a little bit better and they're expandable, uh, going into the future, for example, section types, when we put the O three O at the end, that allows us to put a O three one or an O three two or whatever, just in the type of section. Okay, um, seven or eight?
Changes.
Not much. Nine? Ten? Eleven, twelve, okay, two, one head, all right, thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen? Blow through it fast.
So eleven, you got something on the button. It's meat, shop on, I don't know what section it is.
Good call, so this is, um, uh, section one oh four dash twenty-two, three point oh six, so let me scroll down to that, so this is in food, so food, beverage, and other product sales for human consumption section. And Western Weaver wanted to see butcher shops allowed to be a little bit bigger.
So this is maximum.
Yeah, maximum ten thousand square feet.
Okay.
Do you guys have any concerns about that change?
I don't think it would ever be anything that.
I mean.
A thousand square feet is a big butcher shop.
That's, the Western Weaver seemed a little bit on, on the fence, but they, at the end of the day, they didn't seem, there was one or two people who said, let's allow more, ten thousand and.
But again, it would happen to be an area where you could have a bunch of shopping. Yeah, well, there's some builders or one of those areas that are.
So if you look at the, uh, where they're proposed, they're proposed in as permitted in government institutional, vehicle-oriented, commercial, mixed-use, commercial, and multifamily residential.
So that could be an issue, I guess.
Wait, so could that be government and?
Could that designation be tacked down to another?
Next one.
Designation?
Okay.
Could that designation as a butcher shop be tacked on to, for example, a grocery store to expand the footprint of the grocery store?
Potentially, yeah, and actually, that's one of the ways that Nordic, uh, worked with us, they said, one of them says no more than, uh, well, let's just focus on ten thousand, no more than ten thousand square foot, uh, can occupy any particular area, that used to say ten thousand square foot building, now if you look further in, it actually talks about ten thousand square foot of area, so, yeah, the grocery store could say, well, this is where Starbucks is, that's not the grocery store, that's Starbucks, this is where the pharmacy is, that's not the grocery store, that's pharmacy, so yeah, there's a potential there, but I did want to talk to you guys about the grocery store, when we get there.
Cause that makes a pretty big building then.
That can make for a much bigger building.
Again, would be, I think, a scale issue for the.
Yeah, so the ten thousand square feet, the butcher or other custom meat products, um, if it's the grocery store operating that butcher, um, or the, the meat, uh, area, it wouldn't add on to whether, no, and that's, that would all just be part of the maximum square footage for the grocery store itself, yeah.
Okay, awful, this is more of a standalone.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I don't know why you need a ten thousand square foot butcher shop, but if you guys would like us to say in the Ogden Valley five thousand and the Western Weaver ten, we could do that.
No. Well, I think it does set precedent by having big buildings, you know, too many, you know, this, this building's allowed to be that big, then some other building that may not necessarily fit in at that scale, they, they may say, well, if you can have that.
Why not others? Yes, that's actually, uh, so looking at up to, um, two rows bakery delicatessen or, or catering, small, five thousand was just kind of the number we used to say small versus large, um, it's just based off of how much space is being occupied. Um, and so when Western Weaver said, let's go to ten for butcher or custom meat cutting, kind of resist a little bit, because if we do one, why aren't we doing it for the others?
Yes, it, this is the problem with being partnered with a place that has a lot of space.
Yeah, and actually, custom meat products, butcher and custom meat products is actually in the Ogden Valley code, but it's not in the Western Weaver code, so for them to even be looking at this.
Interesting.
A little bit different, yeah, there is actually, uh, an entity in the Liberty area that is a custom meat cutting entity. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. If you have a ten thousand square foot building and you need more parking, you need just a.
Yeah, but assuming you could fill it up and actually make it marketable.
Sure, right.
Right.
And they still have to come, yeah.
I think five thousand makes more sense.
Okay.
You're taking for the butcher?
Yep.
Yeah. The more I think about it.
Works for me.
Five thousand and O B P A. Okay.
So is that how you're gonna do it? You'll just say?
The reality is, market butcher shop is still allowed, it's just not allowed in those two hundred years old.
That's exactly right, we're not stopping it from happening, we're just saying, if you're gonna be in a mixed-use commercial, that's not, it's so huge that you're smelling fish and stairs in the residential units.
Cause you can still do a large one, I'd say go back to five and then that's consistent with the bakery.
Okay, perfect. I think when Western Weaver plugs this into the map that they've been reviewing, um, I think it changed their mind.
It'll make more sense to be scared of staying in these zones.
That's right, that's right. Okay, good question. Um. Okay. Nothing on twelve?
Well, twelve, that's where you said you want to talk, or is that?
Uh, later, yeah. Um, thirteen, any questions? Okay. Fourteen, and now we're on residential uses, so, um, I revise this so it doesn't get so clunky. Um, residential, so Western Weaver is concerned about allowing short-term rentals, much like a lot of the folks in the valley are, um, however, Western Weaver doesn't have as much of a drive, uh, market for short-term rentals. Um, so far, they've said, we don't want them out here, now, they're being asked to think about it again, um, by, uh, by the commissioners, just to see if they've changed their minds since the new plan has been adopted, um, but so far, what I've heard from them is, you know, this has eaten into affordable affordability, and we don't think that's appropriate. There might be some streets in Western Weaver where it might be appropriate, maybe in a mixed-use commercial area or something like that. So, the intention is that it doesn't change for the Ogden Valley, but it's being reorganized, so you kind of see what I'm going for and what you're looking at, but if you look at the screen here, um, short-term rental, I've just split it out, O V P A versus Western Weaver P A, uh, planning area being the P A, um, very similar to what you have in your packet, I just use it on the same line. And I'm proposing to do that every time there's a difference in uses, as well as in, um, size standards. So. Now, in the form-based code, we currently list short-term rentals as conditional uses, we forgot to change that when we adopted the short-term rental ordinance, so where short-term rentals are allowed inside of a mixed-use, or excuse me, inside of a form-based area, they should be marked as Ps and not Cs, uh, not conditional, just put them, we've already put a ton of regulations on it.
So you're saying that they can just do it without getting them?
If they're inside of certain.
They have to get a license.
They do have to get a license.
Okay.
Yes.
But, but it's just allowed.
Is that, is that an idea?
And that's all form bases?
Uh, for the Ogden Valley, it's all, all form-based streets.
So we can't, I mean, we could technically change it.
Yeah, if you want to do, see here, uh, I'd have to go back in, we might have to change a couple of sentences in the form, uh, or excuse me, in the S T R.
Shouldn't they all be a conditional?
Well, here's the, here's the challenge, and here's why we went with permitted instead of conditional, um.
I already see where this is going, but I want.
So, um, what are the impacts of S T Rs? We've got a whole, a big list of the impacts of S T Rs, and we know it's garbage, it's, it's partying, it's parking, it's, um, uh, pets, it's, I mean, all kinds of stuff. And so we wrote probably, I can't remember what the final adopted version was, but ten to fifteen-page ordinance just focused on dictating how S T R should function and not function, and putting some pretty severe penalties on what happens if they violate. The intention of that was to take the, um, subjectivity that can run with a conditional use permit, um, and just turn it into straight objectivity, if you violate this, and this is the same rule for everybody, it's not special rule for you, special rule for you, special rule for you.
And we have to approve every single one of them.
Yeah. So. So here's a question for you guys then, instead, look at the street types, and are there street types where S T Rs maybe belong a little bit better than others?
I think parking is the most objective way to mitigate problems in advance, so if there's no, if, if there's minimal parking, that would tell me that you're gonna run into problems with your ordinance, and then you have to get into an enforcement mode.
Yep, that's right.
Mixed-use, multifamily or multifamily areas, what did your parking rate feel required? I mean, just shooting from the hip.
For, for a residence, it's, it's flat across the board to, um, two cars per residence. Yeah, however, if you're doing an S T R, you have to provide sufficient parking that reflects your occupancy, I think it's one space, so there's special rule, parking rules for S T Rs, I think it's one space per bedroom.
Yeah, that's, that's where it becomes an issue, maybe.
Okay, and that, that starts to get into the weeds of it, but I'm, I still want to talk about S T Rs for form-based, if it's automatic, and the big thing with passing the S T R ordinance was that we were gonna have no new areas, only the existing areas that currently allow S T Rs are gonna be allowed S T Rs, and then everybody that wants to within those areas has to get a license, right? That was the deal. But if we start allowing people to switch to form-based because they want to do T D Rs, or they want to bank, or they want to do whatever it is that's gonna come down the line, they automatically just added new areas for S T Rs, which is against what we just talked about doing with the ordinance.
Yeah, so.
Well, that's a big loophole.
Oh, not, not necessarily, because I think when the commissioners adopted the, uh, S T R ordinance, they knew that it was allowed in the form-based areas, and so.
But we can turn anything into a form-based area.
That's right, so that's one thing to be cautious about when we're doing form-based, is making sure it, it is a good area for S T Rs to go.
And that, in, in reality, a form-based area is the best place for them anyways, if you're gonna have.
Sure, um, think a little bit about, uh, that large lot subdivision that you guys will be seeing at the end of the month here, um, the.
Which is right next to a home, private, home neighborhood.
Sunnyfield.
Sunnyfield, yeah, that one up there, maybe S T Rs don't belong in that neighborhood.
Right, but it comes automatically with the performance.
You guys have the opportunity to say, put an end there for not approved.
What do the commissioners say? I just was curious what they've talked about.
Um, so they knew that it would be allowed in the form-based as the form-based ordinance, uh, gets adopted and applied to property and then expanded to more properties, um, they knew it would be in there. Uh, it was part of the discussion from the beginning, but I don't know that they really focused in, that wasn't any part of their motivation in adopting that ordinance, it's just short-term rentals was already listed in form-based before they were dealing with the S T R ordinance.
So should I go back to conditional, so you can see where they go?
What if, well, so the issue with conditional is still, I mean, you could see it, you guys will see it, but you'll have to approve it.
And it's still allowed.
Right, that's right.
If you're not extracting it, you're just making them kind of bring in from a planning commission.
Taking a big old den right here. Yep, take a look at what, um, Western Weaver wants, just, uh, short-term rental ends across the board, except for those first five um, areas, uh, short-term rental that is owner-occupied, uh, ends across the board, again, except for those first five. And you guys can choose to do that if you want to.
I, I'm not comfortable letting it be, because we'll, we'll start passing, like, which we've talked about in the past, form-based, because somebody wants to transfer in development rights, and that's tends to be at least what I can, what I thought we were mostly discussing and focusing on, when we start playing form-based, and then you kind of forget about the fact that, oh, that neighborhood just became a short-term rental neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the, what we have, but it's gonna be all the, because it's all gonna be one form.
Absolutely. I mean, you might as well just approve short-term rentals everywhere, which is what everybody fought against.
It's only in the areas with P, though, you start getting into large lot residential, it's not limited. But it's gonna be all the.
Yeah.
I want to say too, though, that one of the points about this that, uh, it was brought up about the parking, um, we require at least two parking spaces for each short-term rental for the, uh, other conditions and ordinances, so if you don't have two condition, two dedicated parking spaces for each short-term rental, you don't get to have it, regardless of what zone you're in. But, but being in the valley, not a huge city, you're gonna, you're gonna need it anyways, right? When if it's downtown Salt Lake, they're trying to get like a half a parking stall per unit, and because they want people to walk.
Yeah.
Ian's not gonna be, you may walk around Eden, but that's it, you know, walking through.
Nordic got, um, one and a half per condo, uh, in their development agreement, so we were, we even modified further to what our parking requirements were for them, however, I've made sure it was very clear that they don't get to waive in their development agreement, they don't get to waive the parking requirements if it is a short-term rental, so just making sure that.
That is the area where you stay.
Kind of belongs in that area, right?
Yeah.
As long as it's not creeping up the neighborhoods.
That I get. Oh.
Yeah, that's wrong with proving each one, I guess, what's wrong with that?
If you're doing it on case by case, first, first off, you're required to approve it, unless, so the order, the state code says a conditional use permit is a permitted use with conditions.
Right.
And they can't be denied unless they can't meet the conditions.
Parking.
That's right, that's right, so, um, the way the S T R ordinance was written, it was intended to capture every possible externality, so rather than having them go through a specific permitting process, it's just.
But through enforcement.
You have to, yeah, it'd be through enforcement after that, that's right, so one of the issues, if it goes through the planning commission as a conditional use, and the planning commission applies this rule for that guy and this rule for that guy, and we have a lot of them, that's gonna get almost unadvisable, we'd have to have a pretty big enforcement team, so we just try, part of regulating S T Rs is standardizing them, so we could actually enforce as well.
Can you put a cap on S T R, say that you can have five hundred, that's it?
Yeah, they, they didn't. Yeah, so we actually talked about that, we talked about putting a cap and saying, first five hundred, that's it, um, one of the issues the commissioners had with that is, um, they didn't want to pick winners and losers, so they didn't want to, well, anyway, they're already picking winners and losers on that S T R front, because you got some neighborhoods where it is allowed, some zones where it is allowed, and some where it's not allowed, so. I don't want to get too hung up on this, I just want to, let me get your guys' gut action or gut reaction on this.
I'm uncomfortable.
Okay, well, hang on, let me, let me ask a few more questions, um, uh, multifamily residential, would you be uncomfortable if on one of your multifamily and turn back to your maps, uh, if, on one of your multifamily residential streets, the dark orange, you've had, you know, S T Rs in there, uh, page sixty for um, Newtown Eden and page fifty-seven, fifty-eight for Oldtown Eden.
So say that again, please.
So if you look at the dark orange areas on these maps, um, this is where multifamily is allowed, would you be opposed to allowing short-term rentals in multifamily buildings? Are you one, no?
Would be opposed to it, as I said?
Yeah, would you be opposed to allowing short-term rentals, either owner-occupied or not owner?
Trying to make these multifamily, like, we're trying to make this workforce or, you know, affordable, because if we start short-term renting, that's.
That's one of the reasons why the workforce provision is in there.
Is what, uh, is in here. Well, right, but that's the exact. Well, right, but that's the exact area we're talking about.
I don't disagree with you. So they, if they did S T Rs in a development, there still would be to be workforce units in that particular area as well.
Right, but the income coming, and I mean, just market.
Yep.
Demand, the income coming in a short term rental is gonna help.
I don't disagree. It's a, it's a challenge. Do I, is is a silence, uh a rejection of the idea?
A small lot residential, I think, no.
Three thousand square feet? You could have a single family, or you could have up to four, single, two, three, or four family dwellings. So you could have condos or uh townhomes there, up to four per lot. So you don't have, is that a, you don't have an issue, or you do have an issue?
Where do you draw the line?
It's.
But we had a purpose for that. I mean, that workforce housing, that affordable housing, and if we can, you know, quadruple our money by doing short term rentals during a great ski year, then no one's gonna sell to the teacher or the fireman.
They're gonna be investment properties if.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And there is a difference. So there are two lines we're looking at here. One is the short term rental uh and one is the short term rental comma owner occupied or owner occupied short term rental. There is a difference in the way that those behave.
What is owner?
Yeah, what's an owner of a short term rental?
So it doesn't mean onsite, but owner occupied means that the owner uh of that building lives in that building most of the year, seven months out of the year is how the tax assessor.
Or they can say that's where they live.
Of the building. So if I own a condo building with four condos in it, I I live in one for seven months.
The one that you live in for seven months out of that year, if you are renting that out for short term rentals, that would be your owner.
Oh, that, it's not the whole building.
The other three, yeah, would be not owner occupied.
Okay.
We don't have to, we're gonna vote on this.
Right, at at the end of the month. Yeah, I'm just trying to get straw here.
And you're gonna get.
I was gonna say, this one makes me think a little bit more, because I didn't understand it when I read.
And there will be a lot of public sentiment come forward on this.
Very much so, yeah, yeah.
I'm circling it, I'm not.
Okay, we will circle it and not make any decisions.
I was gonna say, in my, in my opinion, I know we're not supposed to have a ping pong, but in my.
No, you, you could have a.
Belongs in resort areas, right? Creek Resort, Snow Basin Resort.
Yeah.
Arctic Valley Resort.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Because people are coming to use all facilities, stay there.
Yeah.
Even Ogden Valley is not a resort.
The whole Ogden Valley, right?
Not supposed to be.
No. So you see what uh Western Weaver has done? They've said if it's short term rental, you're only allowed in up to small lot residential. Um now, Western Weaver still has a hard time with that. I don't even know if that's gonna get passed, um because it's about fifty fifty uh uh out there. And then for your owner occupied, um. Yeah, it was uh, it was about the same, actually, yeah.
So I wasn't here when the, this was discussed in the context of form based.
Mm hmm.
Was that, what was the do, the direction for that? And where did that come from to limit it to those form based areas?
Uh when we were to limit S T Rs to form based, so S T Rs are limited to where they're currently allowed.
Yes.
Yeah, and this, I I guess the direction was um as these village areas, as they start to grow, um they might make good areas for shorter rentals. You're gonna see hotels pop up in these areas, or motels, or other lodging facilities pop up in these areas. So.
Those are short term rentals.
They are, yeah, defined differently in our ordinance. That's how we define short term, a little bit different, but yeah, I I almost think you leave them where they are and don't expand them into these areas here. Um I would suggest G N I, B O C, and M U C and leaving it at that like the Ogden Valley has proposed. Or excuse me, like Western.
Family commercial.
That'd be mixed use commercial, but not in a multifamily.
I agree.
First three permitted.
No.
Because that's where you're gonna get your hotels and stuff.
Okay. Um. Owner occupied, do you guys want to do anything different for that? The Western Weaver did not.
So owner occupied could be any condo type building, big or small.
It's gotta be a condo.
Yeah, one, one unit, in a multi unit.
Big or small.
So that's basically saying you can have a short term rental.
Wait. In the form based zone, owner occupied is only for condos, or it's also all of this, all of the residential, I don't.
Right.
It's only for condos or?
No, it's permitted all the way.
Right, all the way across.
In any, yeah, any dwelling type.
Yeah.
So in the Ogden Valley, it is currently permitted all the way across. So if you guys want to make that change, we can make that change here. And honestly.
Provided you're in, you know, currently established short term rental zone, this is changing the zone.
Yes.
Yeah.
They have to go into the form based zone for this.
Right, yeah. So my suggestion, if you guys are comfortable sticking with what Western Weaver called out, just only allowing it in the G N I, B O C, and M U C. And if we do that, I'll merge owner occupied and just short term rental, I'll just merge them into the same use, because at that point, there's no point in splitting them out. You guys okay with that?
Seems reasonable.
Okay.
This has to go before a public hearing.
Yeah, it does. And one of the biggest issues with short term rentals, um obviously, is is the neighborhood that it's in. If we're creating villages, maybe it it'll be disruptive to the people who live there right now, that's for sure, especially if it's folks on, you know, one unit for three acres right there. As the, that area fills in, maybe we wait on even allowing any short term rentals until we get more of these uh commercial type buildings with condos above, uh.
How are we allowed to do that?
You just say no until.
But if it's in the ordinance, and if they're in a form based, you get to do it.
Right.
Oh, sorry, that, okay.
Later to allow them.
That I'm good with, saying no, no, and.
Yeah, you can say.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the sign is gonna say in the public hearing.
You can always say yes.
Okay, and and in the public hearing, um if you guys don't like the version that is pitched to you and just in general want to see something different, maybe I do come back with Ps in those first three, and in the meeting, you guys all had a consensus that it's just be no, uh and across the board. As long as all of the desire changes isn't pages long, you guys can just make a motion that says, you know, move to approve except for short term rentals, make them all know. Uh you know, grocery stores allow forty thousand instead of thirty thousand, you know, you can do whatever you want to do at that point. Or tables to another hearing if you wanted to. Okay, good, page six of sixty nine.
Sixteen, six.
In the nation, sorry, guys, I got. Sorry. Uh fifteen. Anything on fifteen? Good, um seventeen, sixteen or seventeen.
This is all pretty basic stuff, right?
Yeah.
It's in line with everything in similar areas.
I I think so, um but uh pay attention to the maps, pay attention to the colors, because there, I mean, if something comes online, maybe there is a uh particular type of shop, a dry cleaning shop or something like that, that comes online uh in a mixed use commercial, where there is a residential building right next door. Uh there are making that transition is gonna be hard to do for a lot of people who own and live right there. Now, when we created this, we did create it with a number of uh owners and business owners from at least the Old Town Eden area. Um and so they seem to be fairly comfortable. Um but it doesn't mean everyone is. And I I remember uh uh Chris Oak, who was on planning commission at that time, he lives right here, and uh when we got time to uh take action on the form based plan, I think something clicked where he said, wait a second, I'm on one of those roads. Um so if the sentiment's gonna be different once you start to implement it, especially if people aren't paying attention to it. I don't wanna, you know, what was it Nancy Pelosi said about the Affordable Care Act? We have to adopt it so we can read it. You know, I don't want to do something like that. Let's read it, and then. I don't know, that's what she said. Somebody told me you said that. Okay, um outdoor storage, Western Weaver wants to have more discussions about that. Um they, they want places to put their toys outside somewhere, but um I don't think that's gonna work in the Ogden Valley. We specifically changed outdoor storage um because of issues that were happening in the Ogden Valley and pushed all the outdoor storage to far, far western over in the manufacturing areas. Um so we'll see what actually happens out of.
Is that one gonna be built over there where we have paid a while back? On the river?
Um that one's not outdoor, down by the river, that's all.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was thinking indoor, but is that, is that moving forward, you know?
Um. They have a development agreement that I think it expires after five years of adoption, but no, we haven't seen any building yet. Same owner owns the um units up on top, but on the yeah, in that village center. So I'm I'm sure he's, once he's all filled out and he has more demand, he'll probably stay in the other one. Okay. Um moving over to page twenty one. Unless somebody says something before then.
United Refueling Station.
So on page twenty one, um if we do end up regulating short term rental and owner occupied and non owner occupied together, then um oh, goes away.
Sorry. Sorry, real quick, page nineteen.
Okay.
Your comments about conditionally allowed, is that for Western Weaver ordinance on the on the refueling station? Uh, page nineteen halfway up. Your comments off to the side said Western Weaver condition.
Nineteen, sorry. Yes, yep, it showed us not allowed across the board.
Split those.
Yeah, so they they want to see something different. In fact, I think I did split that.
So I don't. Where do you put an E V station that's allowed, that's refueling?
Oh, yeah.
Um gas station or gas or refueling station, look uh at the second line down from the top on the table. So we do have vehicle oriented and government institutional streets is where they would be allowed.
And that's where an E V would go?
Mm hmm, yeah. Whatever fuel is needed for that particular type of vehicle, it's just truck or gas, uh truck, gas or refueling station, being treated differently just because a trucker stop is quite different than just a typical gas station.
Yeah, so no E V refueling of that for trucks.
Okay, oh. That's it. Uh so, yeah, I guess that's true. I didn't even think about that. Um guess they gotta come up to the valley fully fueled. I do know the Maverick, they did build their canopies high enough to get a truck in there, um but it's not common, you'll see one go.
I mean, Norway's out, but it's probably gone.
Do you guys want to see some allowance, uh maybe in the vehicle oriented commercial areas? That's only in Newtown, there's no vehicle oriented commercial.
I'm fine with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, why do it be such?
Yeah, you can see up on the screen, uh truck, gas, sorry, truck, gas or or refueling station. Split up by O V P A versus Western Weaver.
Yeah.
Actually, I probably should have put a conditional use. Okay, um perpetual building maintenance agreement, we just added in there other than single family dwellings and their accessory buildings. Um. So, yeah, uh it's actually page one forty eight, or sorry, line one forty eight on page nineteen. Uh if you look at it on the screen, we're just suggesting a little bit extra language in there. That's not intended to apply to single family dwelling lots.
That's like, that's like mixed use multifamily, anything on the street front that's close to the sidewalk.
That's right. And if you've got a a four flex in a, in a small lot residential area, it would probably apply there as well. Um you just want to make sure that if you've got a zero setback or less than a ten foot setback, that there's the ability to maintain that side of the building.
And that's an agreement you would sign with the owner, so you can get care of your property.
That's right.
Yeah.
Hey. Woody, I don't see any changes on Woody. So I'm trying to follow along with the other hand.
Twenty one, you were saying about section code, short term rental.
So, yeah, if we do combine them together, and it's just short term rental, the owner occupied goes away, so that'll be nice and easy. Uh any questions on twenty two? Line two seventy three, change in uh B to an A, we're just a misreference section. Okay, um page twenty three. Um so this is where we're adding in the medium large lot residential, twelve thousand five hundred.
Uh it's gonna go for the Ogden Valley too.
Um it it'll apply across the board to any street that is labeled the um medium lot, medium to large lot residential now, right now.
It was in all of our other color things, and he was saying we don't have it right now, but we could have it, and it'll apply.
You can choose to have it, yeah. Um looking down at the the table uh below uh part B on page twenty three, um I just put a little, instead of having the asterisks off to the side, I'm just using uh footnotes on those, uh and the medium large lot residential, uh those would be sixty feet wide, uh minimum, sixty feet wide.
It does make sense to go small and gradually grow out.
Yeah, and there was a perfect little slot right in there to put sixty, thirty, fifty, sixty. Um sixty is also, uh Western Weaver is working on a brand new um ordinance, which you'll see on the other um document we're looking at. Um that is a residential uh ordinance that allows fifteen thousand square foot lots. Um but they're, they want to allow lot widths to go down to sixty feet, um and provide some flexible styling, so that's kind of why you see sixty there. Okay.
This also does help keep the density in all areas too.
Mm hmm.
But smaller lots and those.
That's right. So something to think about, um we're talking about the creep, the um the sprawl creep out of these villages. Uh when you're looking at the maps, um those light, those bright greens, those are half acre lots on the periphery. Um one of the discussion points that we had was, do we create a new street type and call it medium large? Or do we just stick with medium and then large, but reduce large from twenty thousand square feet down to fifteen? And one argument, I think it was Burton mentioned, well, you could fit more fifteen thousand square foot lots in there, which means you might eat more transferable development rights just in this area. Um twenty thousand, you wouldn't be able to get as many in there. Um so it really just comes down to, as this thing kind of goes outward, how do we want to make the transition from your urbanized area into your rural area?
Yeah, if the intent is to keep the density there, that makes sense to have that small lot size. It's not sprawling the area out, it's just putting more density in there.
Right, so you could see a ring around Eden, um that is right now the twenty thousand square foot lot size. It's just one ring around it, um a a street type. And then the next one in is eight thousand square feet, and then the next one in is three thousand square feet, and the next one is multifamily and mixed use commercial.
But it doesn't bring them, it doesn't expand things out. It's just adding another line in within the area that we already have.
That you could use or not use at some point in the future if somebody asks for it. Okay. Um, okay, so this is actually, uh so line two seventy eight, this is something new that the uh Western Weaver is working on. If we're looking at lot sizes that are um pretty narrow, they're concerned about just driving down the road and seeing only garage spaces. Um and so what they would like to see is some standard ratio of how much garage door can you have versus what is your lot width? And so the number that uh we came up with them was um fifteen percent, as I was punching those numbers in a little bit more based on different um lot widths, uh I think it's better at eighteen percent. So basically, your garage door cannot be any wider than eighteen percent of what your lot width is. So if you had a uh fifty thousand square, or sorry, a fifty foot wide lot, you would get a eight to nine foot wide garage door, that's front facing. And you can have as many garage doors as you want, facing a different direction, it's just what faces the street.
What if you have more than one?
What if you have more than one door facing, is that cumulative?
So I just revised it to say cumulative, so let's go there. Uh, I didn't put cumulative in there.
And you're doing, instead of fifteen, it's eighteen? You said eighteen, but it says fifteen.
Right, um, it says fifteen, I'm suggesting eighteen, because you don't get a two car garage. If you do fifteen, not until you get up to a hundred and twenty foot wide lots, which. You know, you got eight thousand square foot and twenty thousand square foot that. I don't know, it just. I think you want to make some. Exceptions there.
Smaller lots, you're not going to get any garage.
Not facing forward, that's right.
You're not gonna build a side entry on an eight thousand square foot lawn or a house.
That's right, that's right. So what's the alternative? It's actually, it's a rear load, alley load lots. And and we do provide some provisions for alleys, uh, in that case. Yeah, so as you're driving down the public road. You don't see that this community celebrates their cars as much as other Western communities do. You'll, you just see houses and then they just go in through the back.
I can tell you that alleys and high dense snow areas don't work so well.
Yeah.
I've seen it. Or it doesn't work.
Really hard to fly.
Really in fairly new expensive properties where. It's they're just hard, it's hard to get the snow out, nowhere to put it.
Yeah, one of the standards of alleys is it's got to be a minimum of twenty feet wide, do you think that would help with that?
Twenty feet wide is barely two cars passing.
I I think in those cases, you're gonna see a one lane street with snow storage. One way.
Just has to be done with that in mind.
Yeah.
And the snow required small storage area.
Mm hmm, okay, let's make sure we give that in there.
That's important, because we. This doesn't make sense to truck snow out of here.
Well, it just won't happen, and then people won't be able to pass and.
I remember a few years ago, we were wondering if everyone was gonna snow again. It's, uh, I can guess it. Okay, I'll make sure that gets in the alley section, which we still haven't looked at yet, so we'll get there. Um, next page over, uh, page twenty five, unless there's more questions on twenty four. I love the highlight you see here, I'm just trying to, um, first off. In the commercial, so for commercial buildings, we were saying the minimum and the maximum setback is from the front lot line. Um, we should be using street on that, and we should have both, we should have a minimum maximum from the street versus the maximum from the front lot line. On commercial types of streets. Commercial, um, multi-family residential, government institutional, et cetera. There's the ability for people to get lots inside the block. And get access to this, so you might have your outside block with storefronts and condos on top. And then you go to the inside of the block, and then you've got, maybe you've got multifamily in there, or maybe you've got, um, other kinds of uses in there. Um, so they don't require street frontage, you just have to have access to the internal block by an alley or by a other kind of road. In those cases, those blocks or those lots can have zero setback, um, to build right up to the property line. They still have to provide parking, some kind of shared parking plan with their neighbors and, um. Access, no storage, uh, drainage, all that kind of stuff.
Sidewalk, basically.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, you you'd have sidewalk, um, you'd also have, um, I'd say probably shared access agreements. Um, a whole host of things to to make that function for them, otherwise they wouldn't be able to get approval, because they have to have access to it. Uh, and so what this does is it says, your, your lot line setback doesn't have a minimum, but you cannot build closer, or you have to. It's. Your measurement is from the street, sorry, kind of all over the place tonight, but so basically, um, your minimum street setback. Is, uh, we're looking at here, so no minimum for the government institutional vehicle oriented commercial, mixed use commercial or multifamily. And then you have a maximum setback. It's five feet. Or twenty feet of providing public dining or gathering space, and that's maximum from the street.
Does that match your street types that you have? So that's matching what your master plan, what the streets are going to look like in all these buildings.
It is, yeah, so you, there's a minimum max, and we're basically saying your buildings can't be too far back.
Street ended with the sidewalk.
The back, back of sidewalk, yeah, so in the graphics, you'll see the fourteen foot side sidewalk, and then the building is right there. Uh, but then you've got, so that is for your first floor, street level, commercial building facade, that's when you've got the, those commercial buildings. For all other building facades. Um, you still can't be any closer to the street than, in this case, sixty feet, because we're providing space for those commercial. Uh, first, first story, commercial, uh, building facade to go there. So if you put in, let's say you're in the mixed use commercial area, and you put in multifamily. You've got to have that setback sixty feet from the street, and it'll even provide for that commercial space up front, but. From your property line, you've got no, no maximum setback. So that makes sense. Fill, fill the whole thing up, you just have to have all the parking and everything else that the code otherwise requires. Concerns, questions?
My, just concerned because we go on a daily basis as utilities, has anybody thought through how much space we need for utilities?
Yeah, so in a number of these cases, the, the developer will have to work with the utility company to provide. The market's gonna govern on that as these developments unfold, unless they're unfolding on a lot by lot basis, which I'm a little concerned is gonna happen. Um, because there's so many different lot owners in these areas. But they wouldn't be able to develop if they didn't have access to utilities.
It's just. The minimum or the maximum setback is. Can be a problem with utilities.
The five foot, so there, uh, I see what you're saying, yeah, we, we actually, uh, worked, um, pretty hard with our engineering team and a few utility companies. The distance between the building front and the curb is, is very wide. And so you'll see most of your utilities in, um, underneath that in utility vaults and. Kind of like you see out here.
Okay, so you've got room for vaults and.
Yeah, challenge. Okay. Adding a, a provision under, so medium large lot residential. Just having the little superscript three right there, if you look it down in the note. Um, the minimum may be reduced, so this is the minimum, uh, setback, minimum setback on the. Medium to large lot residential may be reduced to fifteen feet as long as the lot is rear or side loaded. In other words, a, and there's further restriction there, no parking area should be provided within the fifteen foot, that should say front. Brunt setback. So basically. That's exactly right, and we don't want you to try, and so don't build a fifty foot sidewalk, give them and wait for someone to buy, and they've got a truck, right? Um, yeah, park in the back. The next table down, starting on line three thirteen. When we first created the form based code, we forgot to add in minimum setbacks for accessory buildings, so this just adds a column for accessory buildings.
Side lot line setback, so this is accessory buildings.
Is that becoming an issue? I mean, we've said a minimum. Maximum, minimum of one foot setback. Is that from Eve line? Or is that from?
That can become an issue, yes. Now, I would say, I don't know what kind of air rights are actually owned, but I would say if somebody's eve is going over to my property, at the very least. Their water's draining onto my property.
Or small sliding into your property or whatever.
And that's one of the reasons why it's one foot, because your water could potentially just hit right there on the property line. Now, snow, I don't think it can prevent that. But unless you have a further setback. We stuck with the one foot, because that's just what's standard in all the other zones. They can do more if you want to.
Trying to create density down there, so I mean, it makes sense for them.
Okay. Page. Twenty seven, any questions?
I was at. Um, small lot residential percentage increased. And eighty five to ninety percent. Maximum percent of lot coverage by buildings.
What was the point of that?
Remember, uh, the Western Weaver did have a conversation about it, I don't remember what the. At the door was maybe just to give a little bit more area.
Again, to scale, I mean, if you're just covering up small areas with buildings.
It's a lot, it's a, it's a lot. Yeah, it is a lot. You want to stick with eighty five?
Me and I. It just seems like that's, that's a big footprint, if you're on a small piece of property and you're adjacent to another small piece of property, those are the big footprints.
It is, yeah, uh, so just to be.
To where there's no big footprints.
Out there.
Out there now.
Yeah, I agree, small lot residential allows the smallest three thousand square feet, so you're right, or what is that math? Maybe it was the math wasn't working very well for them. Um.
They wanted to get rid of the five.
Yeah. Okay, that's my first thought.
Uh, it may very well be what it was. Boy, sorry, this computer is so slow. Yeah, what's ninety percent of three thousand? Yeah, I'm not gonna get it. Twenty seven? Um, so if you did a, that's what it was, they were concerned about being able to put. Three to four condos or town homes on a three thousand square foot lot, so they wanted a little bit more area from this. Um, they still have to provide for drainage, parking, all that kind of stuff, so in this particular case, if you build that much. Um, and you are providing for drainage, you're gonna have to have underground parking, there's, it's gonna be no option at that point. But, or. Or have bigger than three thousand square feet. Yep, do you want to go back to eighty five?
Eighty five's even big, but that's better than ninety.
But we can change it to whatever we want. You want eighty, you want seventy?
I mean, if you're driving down a road and you see five of those in a row. And that's, that's a crammed.
Yeah.
Area.
That particular road would be, um, let's go back and look at the maps, just so we can put it into context. You will, yep, so these are. In my mind, you'll probably see, uh, townhomes, uh, just. That four flex townhome, four by four flex by four flex is probably what you'll see in these areas.
So in the rest of. The valley, what is the, um? What would that percentage be?
There isn't. Yeah, we don't currently have a coverage. Yeah, we do have the setbacks and all that, um, but. Yeah, so the three thousand square foot, um, we are actually looking at setback, so three thousand. Your rear is five feet for the main building, that's the table just above. And then your. Front is, you got no minimum for your front, so you could have it right up, let's see, is that right?
This is the small lot, not the medium lot.
Sorry, that's side lot line, yep, small lot. Your side is zero, uh huh. And then your front. Is. Minimum. Five feet.
You said side is five feet.
The side is zero.
Zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, so it's four and then another four right next door, right, but so then you just have eight. And then eight, I mean, you could, you could just have a row of, of townhouses, houses there, do you want to see a break? Uh, in there.
To me, that seems reasonable in a setting like, you know, Ogden Valley.
Okay, let me, uh, and I think the Western Weaver probably agree with you on that. Uh, so we'll go. Five feet side. That'd be ten feet between buildings, or do you want to see? Yeah, that's actually ten feet between buildings, that gives pedestrians the ability to get back behind. Yeah, so they don't have to go as small as three thousand square feet, it's just the lower limit. So, and they could build single family in this zone, so they can have a three thousand square foot, um, with a single family on it, if they wanted to. So. A lot of different opportunities there, but I would assume that they're really gonna do a four flex, they're gonna go a little, little bigger.
Right, a four flex, I was like, you could do it, you could do it, affordable home, like duplex.
You'd like to look at there.
Skinnier and taller.
Did you live in a shotgun house?
Yeah.
So, when I was in New Orleans, I toured the area and saw some of those shotgun houses, kind of cool.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this particular street type is intended to be a pretty dense street type, but maybe not an uninterrupted building. Street type, so we'll put a five feet in there, match the. Medium lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe in beach communities where. You know, land is more valuable than here, there's still room between.
Buildings.
Buildings.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And sometimes it's staggered, you have ten feet on one side, five on the other, so that as they line up.
Yep.
There is enough room.
Yeah, you know, and that's actually, that is the exact standard that we'll look at in the other ordinance in just a minute. Okay, good, I like this, and I, I think, uh, Western Weaver would be fine with that too. Um, so twenty seven, drop that down to eighty. Okay. And I'll chat with Western Weaver to see how married they are to ninety. If, if they're married, we can split. Okay.
Okay, and twenty nine, we were talking last time.
Any questions on twenty eight, before we turn to twenty nine? Side. Rear, alright, let's put a height. Minimum main height, maximum main height, maximum accessory building height, okay, so on the screen, let me. Do you guys solid here, I can barely read that.
I chose by Old Town Eden, um, with the specific conversation we had last time in mind, and I was surprised, I mean, I, I see it every single day. I multiple times a day, and yet, because of our conversation, they aren't really tall building for a one. Story, but they look. Good, uh, the way they are, but I wouldn't think to go higher, I don't know what that height is, but I wouldn't think to go higher than that.
I haven't gone out and measured, but Edward, but you're talking about specifically the general store?
No, ooh, not the general store, um, the. Blacksmith, uh, yeah.
A lot of that height is facade.
It is, it is facade, but it's still like that height. For the, for being right up on the street.
For a one story building.
For a one story building, it is quite tall, but it looks good, though, I think, I feel like that, I wouldn't. I wouldn't mess with that.
So up on the screen, uh, where we had, uh, we went for fifty to forty on maximum height. Uh, based on our conversation, tell me if I got this right, uh, I am proposing, we do forty feet, except thirty five feet. And no more than two stories for any part of a building within thirty feet of a public street.
What does that mean, forty feet except thirty five feet?
Forty, the maximum building height is forty feet, except cannot be taller than thirty five feet. If it's within.
Okay.
And no more than two stories.
And no more than two stories, yeah.
Okay.
So I, I wanted to make sure.
Thirty five feet, two stories is what I wrote down after our conversation.
That's what he stories, and then I can step back, they can step back.
Five more.
Yep, well. Two, one more, right?
Five more feet.
Five more.
The street can only be thirty five feet tall.
Yes, that's what I have in mind.
And then as you step the building back, you can be up to a maximum of forty.
Yes, that's what I remember.
So that will allow for essentially a three story building with a facade or a parapet.
Okay, and that's it, that.
So it's, it's not gonna look like a big. City. City.
Yeah, the massing of the streets is gonna be a lot lower. Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns? Okay.
What's a residential thirty five feet right now?
Very, well, if you're in cluster, it's forty. Um, but most of the cluster buildings we see have pitched roofs, and so it kind of takes away a little bit from the mass. If you, if you saw a forty foot tall, flat roof residence, I think that would be. Reason to change the ordinance.
You're saying most tall is always be less.
No. If it's, if it was built to that, it, it's just the maximum. I don't know what they were actually, how tall they actually. Is that the CBR one zone? Uh, I don't think the CBR one zone had a specific height limitation. Yeah, yeah, those are tall.
I have a black, so I'm in my home and, um.
And lit up.
They do look. They have a tall feeling, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, vehicle oriented commercial on page thirty. Did I skip anything on twenty nine?
Um.
Nope, it was height.
The O B P A.
Yep, so this is a maximum building or use footprint. So vehicle oriented commercial, um, in the Ogden Valley, that's where the thirty thousand square foot maximum. Uh, allowed area for any given uses. Western Weaver, they said, we're not concerned. Costco wants to come out, that's great.
Please come out.
I think that is what they said.
Okay.
But the Ogden Valley general plan says, we don't want big box stores, so any kind of store bigger than three thousand, thirty thousand square feet should not be allowed. Boy, I've heard stories that the new grocery store is gonna be between forty and fifty thousand square feet.
Once, that's what they want.
Well, that is what they want. Proposed, proposed, but they still haven't proposed it to us.
Am I correct? And then today, it's about sixteen thousand square.
I think they're closer to twenty something thousand square feet, but they're, they're below thirty thousand, yeah.
Even what their difference in Scott, they lost them thirty dollars.
I can't, can't remember. I, I know that at one time I put a polygon around the building and it was about twenty five.
After forty.
Would it be act, the square footage be accurate on that county website?
You want to check right now?
Yeah, cause I thought I looked.
Is it real?
Yeah.
And ours in the valley before?
Forty to fifty.
Well, I think they probably are trying to not.
Of forty to fifty.
Now again, I haven't had any conversations directly with the store owner. They don't have even a commercial zone on that property right now. And so I think they're a little premature on making their site plans or determining how big their building's gonna go. Um, I did have a con- uh, conversation with commissioners, um. Yesterday about the possibility of this store coming in, because they brought something up, and I just mentioned to them that they should be aware that they don't have the zone. Nor do they have, if we do form base over there, the ability to get. Size of building that they want over there. And so for them to be designing their site, they're a little premature on all of that. They should be negotiating what zone they're gonna get first off.
But if we go in the valley market, it's small. It needs to be bigger.
Yeah, so let's have a look at what it is right now.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna cramp people into a smaller building when the needs there for a larger building, but you also don't want to promote. Walmart coming anyway.
Right. And we can always do like, uh, a one off. You could say, you could say thirty thousand for a grocery store. A locally owned grocery store. Yeah, yeah, you could, I mean, it's gotta be legal.
You can say a locally owned.
Yeah, we could find a way to do that.
Did you change it? Like, they're gonna come and look, ask for a rezone, right? Is it like a development agreement? Or you could think, you could read one, you could allow more than thirty thousand in a development agreement?
Yep.
So good.
Okay.
So it's not really limiting them as long as they can get the zone they're asking for.
Right.
And a development agreement for.
It's actually another really good way to, to look at that. So we could limit who we want to allow to have larger buildings based on. What they're providing or, uh, whether or not they are local or whatever it is, just by approving an exception to the rule.
So you could, you could leave the thirty thousand. And then on a, on a case by case basis, it could be. For a pharmacy, because, I mean, everything's small. It needs to be.
Well, there's no reason to.
And I know it's not. Well, maybe it is, looking at the potential for. Less than the potential for good success in the building, if people get. In over their head. Like I heard today that automobile repair facility in.
Yeah.
The valley's gone now, because they couldn't afford. Operate there.
I think that was more of a, like, didn't afford the lease that.
Yeah.
Or something like that. They often nail the building, but.
Right. But, you know, somebody builds twice as big as they need, they don't grow into it, and then they're gone. That's not a good thing.
They could came hard.
Right, exactly.
I think if you can handle it on a case by case basis.
I think, yeah, and then maybe add thirty thousand for the grocery store and an area for a pharmacy. And then a ten thousand square foot with your show.
Let's see. Is this the sidewalk right here on the side? Or is that?
That's, uh, that's the delivery.
So let's go, just gonna guess here. Here.
What's the average cost of having to do a developer agreement? Like, just rather than doing a.
For the, for the landowner?
Yeah.
Um, development agreement requires ten more dollars per acre. Or sorry, five more dollars per acre. So the cut, the fee to do a, do a, fee to do a rezone is six hundred dollars plus five dollars an acre. If it goes with the development agreement, it's ten.
Okay.
So it's not.
It's not like a huge, yeah.
Okay, sorry, double click. About twenty.
Twenty.
And that's Eves. So yeah, you're probably right. You're probably, once you get inside, you're probably looking at a. Area that customers can use of less.
I looked at, what's it called, where the tax records are. Okay, it's sixteen, I thought, or something.
And then it would be across the street.
Yeah, so. Again, it's, nothing's approved, but. Um, this probably right here is owned by Morgan Valley Foods. And that's the H T that owns. Nevermind, but it's Terry Fields.
Yeah, but it's not, um, that little corner pocket.
This one here?
Uh, yeah.
No, and that one is on commercial.
Right.
I've had a few conversations with different people who want to put like a C store there, uh, gas station or whatever, but. Convenience. It's a weird shape. Yeah, it could be with Maverick, that's right. Maverick's got a monopole over there, that's right. It's fighting words. Is that?
And then that other one, uh, the one next to the square, like, let's, would that go with it?
This guy right here?
Yes.
Um, I'm not.
Yeah, I think it does.
Yep, looks like it's on, same.
And the one behind the grocery.
Okay, so they'll have the.
Not that one.
No, 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 the one next to the skinny ones.
No, that current one there, I think. No, the one you were just pointing to, back behind the current store.
Oh, that.
Oh, yeah, look at that. I know that.
Isn't that?
No. Now, Petamounts. Oh, oh, yeah.
Their overflow parking.
I think at one point, but it was just a lease. Yeah, that lease renewal, I can't remember if you guys approved that or not, but, uh, for them to. They needed to renew their lease, and so they just wanted to make sure that they could continue to be there. Okay, leave it at thirty. Yep, great. Good solution. Uh, okay, thirty one, any requests for changes there? Thirty two? Little peppered here and there. You'd see sidewalks, pathways, pedestrian stuff, and where.
What is penetration?
It's window and door openings.
Slats, cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, page thirty three. On thirty four, this is where you could see, uh, Wes Weaver stuff coming in.
And it's, it doesn't aim as such.
Yeah, and they just like the style of Old Town Eden, um, of these buildings. So, so why don't we just start with that? And if we have someone who wants to do something different, we can evaluate it on it.
Are there buildings out there that look like this at all?
Uh, out west, yeah, agricultural buildings. Oh, flip the page over.
No, that, yeah.
Those buildings, yeah. Oh, I did have a question for you guys. Uh, current ordinance, current design review code says white can only be used as an accent color, cannot be a predominant color. Any specific aversion to the color white?
Which white? There's like six hundred.
Which shade of white is a great question, and I've had that conversation with a few homeowners or landowners who are thinking, well, what if I just do eggshell?
Right.
I don't know what color white is.
So I've seen that in our trucking, right, where I live, and, um, in various areas, they were adverse to white, and I think it was. It doesn't look good over time, I guess. Maybe requires more maintenance.
Doesn't age well. Got that big white barn up there.
There's a few things, I think.
I mean, this would only apply to, uh, the commercial multifamily, uh, built, yeah, commercial multifamily buildings. It wouldn't apply to any single family.
I mean, you don't want to end up with a single tone color for an entire building.
Right. And, uh, so what do we have here? Muted earth sound pillars are required. Let's see, do we have any, uh, other color requirements?
Language, I've seen that language used.
In other ordinances.
Well, in. Those types of places where aesthetics were important.
Yeah.
Seen that exact languages.
Okay. Design theme. Yeah, options on your roof line, okay, building form, building massing, building material. Uh, while shall be finished with no less than two diverse types of material. So you might have two diverse types of material, all painted white. Do we want to say more than one color?
I don't know how you can.
We just say more than one color. I would hope if there's.
I mean. Planning department. They're gonna bring you a rendering of what they want to do anyways, right?
Yeah.
And there's some conversation there, and you can make recommendations, but.
If it's adopted this way and they mute this, then it's gotta be approved. Not a lot of flexibility there.
I think the point is to keep the. View on the nature of the valley, rather than make. You know, the eye grabbing. A big bright white building or a bunch of them is gonna be pretty eye grabbing.
York City's a prime example. You wouldn't see a white building, white building in person, because they don't want, they want natural materials.
But which is what this says, right?
Yeah, so. I had an attorney once say. Uh. What do you mean by earth town? There are a lot of different colors that are earth towns. Now, I have written this, and we should probably write this to say, i- in other versions of code, I've written this to say muted earth tones generally visible from the site.
So, if you look at the color photographs that you have in here, they're all. Multitone, earth tone, and I think if you can codify that.
Yeah.
Uh, monotone. You know, may fit in some circumstances, but not in this type of construction.
Okay, perfect.
You want up there now, you see a lot of white.
Yeah, is it? If you're viewing the earth from.
Yeah.
Today's perspective, it's all gonna be white.
If they can find your houses, no, sorry, wait till this weekend, that'll change.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, blue.
Does that mean you can't even have a white door going into your?
No, it says no more than seventy percent. I mean, are we taking that out?
Um.
Yeah, you're taking that out, according to this. Cause a lot of it's an accent color.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a.
Why take it out?
Western Weaver wanted to, the ability to get a little more white in there. They, they just weren't as comfortable with this, the restrictive regulation.
If I'm not mistaken.
Within view of site.
And I've also. And that's in context, and that we're seeing it written where you can't have white window curtains. Again, that jump out.
Yeah.
And take away from the. Aesthetic.
Yeah.
I don't know if that ever ends up in any of the coming.
Muted, muted earth tones, and so at that point, I mean, how far muted of white does it need to be before it's, uh, acceptable? Right.
Not that it's inside.
Yeah.
Unless they're what?
They're visible from the outside, so that was the.
That was the idea.
The idea is not to have things that don't blend into the general surroundings.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay, well, I'll, I'll change this, say muted earth tone colors are required. Are you guys comfortable with at least two? Muted earth tone colors are required?
Sure.
Yeah. That way, it's not all one monotone color. At least two. Okay, I think hopefully good performers obviously will be, uh. But the market's gonna help them design this a better way than just. One monotonous building, but we don't write codes for good performers. Say it again, wait.
Isn't white an earth tone?
If, if you can see. A part of the earth from the site, so when viewed from the site, if you could see by on the earth, so that snow wouldn't be included.
White cloud?
Yeah, no, that's the sky. Yeah.
White flowers.
You could potentially see flowers, so, yeah, there's, it's an argument to be made.
So would you say then that the muted earth tone colors are required, negate the need? For outlawing seventy percent white, because white is not an earth tone?
That, yeah, that's what I.
Or is that up to interpretation on whether white is an earth tone?
Could say including. Or you could reference both, wouldn't you? Just to be clear.
Yeah, say no more than. Let's, let's do that. Let's do both. And then in a Western Weaver, I'll say, so. In. The valley. Um, honestly. Uh, looking at the agricultural, uh, styling of buildings, I kind of thought white would be. Preferred white with, uh, kind of dark accents, dark windows, or dark window, uh. Frames.
A bunch. Uh, there was a couple years ago, a bunch of homes went up that are white with black. Accents or whatever, but.
It's pretty trendy, yeah. Now, now the black building is kind of the thing. I don't understand that.
But, um. But I go with the muted earth tones. I mean, you can do like vanilla and, and crew, and you know, all this other stuff that's not bright white. Right? I mean, the bright whites is really gonna. Pull the attention away from, I think, mostly. We're talking about commercial buildings. We kind of want to keep the look of the valley.
Right. This, this is one of those delicate balances.
Business owners want their business to be seen. I mean.
You don't have to be bright. You just have to be brighter than than a guy next door. It's what Maverick told me. Maverick said when we were like talking about dark skies, they said, we don't have to be bright. We just have to be brighter than the gas station across the street.
Nailed that one.
Yeah, everywhere. Yeah, believe it or not, that gas station up there is, unless they turn the lights up, is, uh, uh, dark sky compliant. Of course, you look at this Maverick down here on Thirtieth Street, and that is. That is, you could see that from outer space. Okay, uh, so I'll take out no more than seventy percent, or sorry, I'll leave in no more than seventy percent of the building's facade shall be, um, white. Uh, really, the question here comes in, uh, how much regulation do you want to see? How much do we want the regulation to say, all right, here is your color code? You know, you could do this color code, this color code, or this color code, and we actually write it in. Or we say.
No.
Uh. Ultra white, I mean, you know, the, the paint coat, paint codes that are called ultra white or pure white. We, we could always say those categories of white aren't allowed. Or we just say. No more than seventy percent of anything in particular is.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I'll leave it in there, and I'll work with Western Weaver on that.
And then this one here, Nordic Valley area building designs, and it's just specific to.
Yeah, and.
They go down to thirty, so none of the buildings facade shouldn't go. No more than.
I do, oh, yep.
And this is what, put into their developer agreement?
This is written into the ordinance, and then their development agreement has. Other details that are not specific to. Other details that are not specific to this here.
In- including things that would contradict.
If they contradict, then the development agreement would.
Right, okay, but but this is for, I'm sorry, all of Nordic Valley, all the single family homes and everything, or just?
Just the commercial.
Just the form based, because we're talking for base, just the mountain.
That's right.
That we.
So in that, in in that form based area, once you get to the single family. We haven't started regulating any of that, we can, it's designed in a way where you can start regulating that, I've just heard from upstairs that they'd rather have their hands off on. Once a family, got it. Okay. Flipping over to, oh, sorry, everybody online. It's hard to. Host both types.
Powder Mountain is their own thing, right, where they're not. We're not trying to do form based up there.
That's right, not trying to do anything. Um if they ever want to do form base, we can, I mean, they'd have to go through and create a whole street regulating plan and everything, so a lot of opportunity to to cut down on that. Okay. All right, okay. So page forty, um we mentioned this last time, I just didn't have the graphic to show it, it's just adding in a three lane village cross section. Forty two. This adds in a. Village cross section with cross slopes. Uh now that this village cross section with cross slopes was already used for Nordic Valley. But we described it with A, B, C, D, and E as opposed to illustrated it, so I'm just suggesting we illustrate and then take out the A, B, C, D, and E. Sorry, send it again. Uh so on page forty two, where we've got the village cross section with a cross slope, we're allowing a little bit narrower of the cross section there. When we approve Nordic Valley and this Nordic Valley specific changes. We just described what that meant with uh what's written in A, B, C, D, and E there. Um just suggesting we change that to a graphic.
On this cross section with the angled parking. Is this like a industry standard?
Angle parking?
Like the sizes and widths of the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, nine feet wide by twenty feet long is what they're.
As far as parking is going, but as far as angle parking, I mean, you put a four door long bed truck there, are you gonna still have twelve feet of travel lane? Because you're gonna have a lot of that up here.
Well, okay, so looking over at the um image on the other on forty one, that's the typical village cross section. That's why we did eighteen feet there. Cause I think down on the valley floor, we're gonna see a lot more of those trucks, the Nordic specific one is the six.
This is Nordic specific.
Yeah, but it's a specific because it's got the cross slope, I'm not, maybe once we get into. Wolf Creek, maybe we'll be dealing with something like this as well, at which time we can adjust if necessary.
So we don't need to actually call it Nordic, we just call it village.
If it's got a cross slope, yeah, you can, you can go down a little bit on that, uh typical. Vehicle is like five and a half feet wide, um excluding mirrors, you might get a little bit more. Uh uh semi is eight and a half feet wide, you get a little more when you have the mirrors on there, so when you look at a twelve foot wide travel surface. Twelve feet is intended to accommodate pretty quick traffic, I could not get our engineers to come down for twelve feet here. Mostly because when you get down to some of these village areas, you're gonna have RVs and boats and stuff like that, and you know, even if they're going slow, it'd be nice to have extra space, but. The engineers. Convinced me to stop pushing on reducing the twelve foot down to eleven or ten. Because when you've got the pickup truck, that's got the long bed, quad cab with the big hitch hanging out the back. That's gonna poke out a little bit into that twelve feet, um even on the eighteen foot uh. Uh standard, so the twelve feet gives a little bit of buffer there as well. And keep in mind, as you're looking at these, the the current speed limit will have to be reduced, they can't stay fifty five or whatever it is. Okay, um four eighty nine, line four eighty nine, page forty two. Block alley design, so um you guys have already seen um most if not all of this. Actually, I've got a little more on the screen here. Um however, I wanted to just walk you through it so it's clear. Mid block alley, okay. So your minimum design cross section is on the board right there, you're looking at uh, is that thirty four feet? And it's basically a road. Um so a lot of times when people are talking about uh alleyways, if you go to some of um exist, some of these existing old mine town types of. Uh villages, you've got twelve foot wide. Alley's, and they just don't work very well. Our code says that alley has to be a minimum of twenty feet wide, that's the debt in the definition of an alley, I am suggesting we change that. To say minimum of whatever the standard is. Uh in that, you know, particular area, which in this case would be thirty four feet, cause you've got pedestrians, and then you've got two twelve foot travel lanes, which is. Excessive for those travel lanes, again, I couldn't, for some reason, get our engineers off of the twelve foot traveling.
They can fire drugs, they're saying.
That's exactly what it's saying, yeah, and these are the primary accesses into the center of the blocks, and so I'm, it's basically a street, and if you look at the. Maps, let's run back, flip back to um. Let's just look at uh Old Town. All those narrow lines, oh, sorry, um page fifty seven. All the lighter line weights. That have a village color to them, so the red and the orange line weights. Inside of those blocks, those are all intended to be mid block alleys essentially, so these are basically roads. And then once they transition out of those blocks, out of those commercial or multifamily blocks, then they go into your small lot residential, and so you a residential street type. Would need to pick up, so it'd need to transfer, it would need to transition from a thirty four foot wide uh right of way with uh twenty four feet of travel surface. To whatever the adopted residential cross section is. At that point, which for most of this will be either sixty or sixty foot, sixty or sixty six foot right away with um. State code just changed, we can't require more than thirty two feet of asphalt. So you'll see this transition.
More than thirty two foot feet of asphalt width wise.
And that's the width you're proposing.
Um yeah, on residential streets, this particular one uh would not be residential, this would be an alleyway that serves multifamily. Some would say multifamily residential, I should say, in a single family residential area, we can't require more than um thirty two feet of asphalt. And they don't tell us how wide a right of way can be, but we found that ours is between. Sixty and sixty six, in some cases will go as low as fifty if necessary, but. Uh most of the time, the engineers want wider to better.
I think you have to figure every. Where every road or alleyway in a residential area in these areas will at some point have a boat maximum with boat trailer. Either parked or temporarily parked, well, whatever, and sometimes more than one, so I think that. Fact of life up there has to be taken into consideration.
Once you get um on these particular streets, well, technically. Street parking isn't required or isn't allowed unless it's specifically provided for for that zone, so in in most of our areas, street parking isn't allowed. Doesn't mean that people don't do it, and it also doesn't mean that we enforce it. Um so here, uh definitely a a trailer, a boat, or a vehicle, any of them wouldn't be allowed to park. So there would need to be other parking facilities for those kinds of um uh vehicles. Our engineers did have some concerns about that as well, they said even in these village areas, you're gonna have a hard time with your recreationalists. Uh finding a spot to park, so.
We're gonna grind up this roll over. Sixty foot, something behind or maybe not sixty, forty foot trailer behind them, and they're gonna get stuck in this alleyway.
Yeah, so that's.
Moves and move outs of multifamily are gonna be kind of like a large box truck to move their shop into their unit.
So, yeah, the box trucks, they, this would be fine for them, not for parking on the street, but for um getting in and getting out again. Um a semi may not be able to do something like this. Um twelve foot wide travel lane can accommodate a semi, and so it really comes down at that point to what your radiuses are, your turning radiuses are. But that's one of the reasons why we went with thirty four, where most communities have a much narrower alley standard, if you go up to Idaho Falls, they actually have. I want to say there's a probably fifteen to twenty feet wide, but then they also have side load dumpsters that they park in there. So the dump truck, or sorry, the the garbage truck drives down a one way alley with a side fork, so then lifts it in and puts it back down again, and they. That's they just leave their dumpsters there, really the true definition of an alley that you think about in like New York City is kind of that. That kind of situation where the crime happens and stuff like that, these not intended to be that, these are access ways to get inside the block. But you're right, um we do have a section also that says. Mid block circulation needs to be provided for, so someone who proposes something that's inside of that block, they've got to show us that. Vehicles can get in and out.
Engineering is gonna be all over that.
Yep.
And, yeah, there's vehicles and.
Yep, 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 you guys know that, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this kind of a width here. Keep in mind, one of these blocks is the same. Dimension as the block that we're in right now.
Or is the same size?
Same size, so the vast majority is intended to be on the exterior facing the public street, but. Um most of what you're gonna see on the interior, at least. Until the market takes off crazy, if it ever happens, it's just gonna be parking areas on the inside. Um if you put a multifamily residential uh structure on the inside of a block, for example, think about. Behind this building between here and the health department building and the crematorium up here, I mean, that's all parking. Somebody chose to put like a big multifamily that occupied a lot of that space. All that parking would have to be offset for all the businesses and for that multifamily, and so you'd be talking about parking structures, maybe two, three stories. Deep to accommodate all that. So I don't see a ton of issues going on as far as circulation goes inside the block. The uh the issue, well, in that respect, uh based on geometry, the issue that I see happening is landowners not wanting to work with each other. Uh this is my parking lot, nobody can use this parking lot, the Jimmy John's story, wait, did I tell you Jimmy John's, nevermind, that was West, that's weird, I told, anyway. Um I went, there's a Jimmy John's in um Salt Lake City, yeah, north south, that uh. They've got a barricade between their parking lot and the one that they actually have a transition into right behind, so. Basically, what they didn't want to pay into the association that was operating and maintaining the parking lot, it's like parking lot wars, and so. The association put barriers so that nobody could drive through their parking lot to get to the Jimmy John's parking lot, I parked. Getting into the Jimmy John's parking lot is incredibly hard, because you gotta make a hard right and with, you know, forty mile an hour traffic around you. Um and so I went around the block and I pulled into that parking lot. Uh of the association, and I just hopped the barrier and went into Jimmy John's and, you know, so sub so fast you freak, I came out seconds later. Jumped the barrier again and had a ticket on my car, and it's it's private ticket, you know, and. Their only way somebody could have ticketed my car that quickly is that they were just sitting there waiting for someone to hop the barrier to go to Jimmy John's, and I look over and there's two people sitting in a truck. Right across the parking lot, it's a whole point there, and you'll see that a little bit later um in this ordinances, cross access easements have to happen. Landowners, they, if they're gonna be doing this, if this is gonna function, they have to work with each other. Okay, sorry.
And Charlie will be there with his Jimmy John's story to.
Here, listen to the story, guys. Second time Bill had to hear this story.
Read us a good example because all the three places we think Washington and the wall are connected.
Perfect example, the worst example is uh Riverdale Road. Drive in, go for the drive through, you want to go to the grocery store, you want to go to the um uh clothing store, or you gotta go out back on Riverdale Road. Back in, uh it's terrible, so. And frustrating and aggravating, okay. Is mid block crossings basically what all this says here, if you haven't already read it, um and I put a couple more standards actually up on the screen, so I'll just run through them on the screen. General location of mid block alleys are shown on each street regulating plan as lines. With a lighter uh weight. Mid block alleys are only required. Excuse me, so um sorry, I'm bouncing back up to the uh parent paragraph, they're only required along the GNI, the VOC, the MUC, and the MFR street destinations. Cause once you get out to the single or the small lot residential, those are residential streets, not mid block alleys. So kind of where generally we're shown, well, what do we mean by general location, we go into a little bit further detail here. Which is. Uh regardless of it's uh R E up on the screen, not in what you're reading. Regardless of an alley's configuration displayed on the street regulating plan map. A mid block alley shall be located at a distance that is no greater than three hundred and thirty feet and no less than two hundred, so if you've got a longer block. These blocks don't have to be square, we're just saying between intersections, you're looking at six hundred and sixty feet. Um generally, uh topography and limitations, sense of lands, all that goes into how the streets are laid out. Old Town makes sense for them to be blocks, because they're already set up on a block system, where Newtown Eden isn't, and and so you might see some curvy roads in there. The point being is, if you have more than. Um between intersection, main intersection, main intersection. You gotta put a mid block alley somewhere in there, uh no further away from one of those intersections than three hundred and thirty feet. And no closer to the intersection than two hundred feet, so we're given a range on where that can be. Giving you the landowner the opportunity to work with other landowners to decide where the best place is for their particular layout. That makes sense, I'm not saying it has to go right here. Okay. If you're looking at part C here, wow, oh, sorry, B. Okay, mid block alley shall provide both vehicle and pedestrian access to and through the inside of the street block. Specifically, they shall provide access to a pu- to public shared parking lots, public or private parking garages. And other uses or buildings that are located in the middle of the block, so shared parking lots, that is a a new thing. Um that we had always intended this to do, but I didn't realize it wasn't in here until um we were looking at this a couple weeks ago. I'll, I'll get into details on shared parking lots in just a minute. One of the mid block alley connects through the street block in which the alley transitions to a residential street, the applicable designer construction standard uh shall also transition to a typical residential street standard. The alley shall be dedicated for public use, but the operations and maintenance of it shall be the collective and equitable responsibility of all landowners whose parcels. And or parking areas gain access from it, an association of owners may be created to specify the details of and management thereof. So part of this is having agreements with the neighboring landowners, and part of a shared parking area will also. Require those negotiations to happen. I didn't want to go too deep in how that needs to look, if you guys want to create, uh if if a block of landowners want to create their own deal. As long as it's meeting minimum standards, it'll be approved, um if they want to be, play really hardball with everybody else. I mean, at that point, we start assessing assessing fines for people not cooperating with each other until they find that it's not worth it to. Do business without some kind of a reasonable um. Solution between the different properties. Okay. Um and when we talk about shared parking lots, shared parking lots are only applicable. When we're talking about buildings that the public can access. So uh multifamily residential building wouldn't require a shared parking, they might drive through a shared parking lot that other people have to get to their building. And those buildings that. Allow uh patron access or public access, they can still create a private parking lot, as long as it doesn't violate any of the other cert internal block circulation. So not trying to limit that ability, just trying to say, look, your minimum customer. So not trying to limit that ability, just trying to say, look, your minimum customer parking, share it with your neighbors. They'll provide as much as they need, you provide as much as you need, and then everybody helps each other out. Uh F, the mid-block alley's access to the street shall align with an existing or planned mid-block alley on the opposite side of the street. If there is no existing or planned mid-block alley on the other side. Then the subject mid-block alley's access to the street should be located in a manner that provides reasonable opportunity for the creation of a future mid-block alley on the upset. So if you create your alley and it ends into an existing building that is very likely to ever be torn down, um you put the alley in the wrong spot. And then the width is that, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, cause that's a little bit newer language there. Moving on, street design standards. Just wanna make it clear that the design standards we're talking about here do not apply to non um. Non-multifamily residential streets, so once you get to the small lot residential and bigger, um that's just residential streets. Okay, um under. Under line five eighteen, switching over to page forty-four, um we just added a new graphic in there to show whatever raised crosswalk is. Curve extension bulb outs, we had explained what they were before, but we didn't illustrate what they are, so you could see them illustrated here. Nothing really big change in. Uh the paved pathway alternative, I think you guys already saw that. Saying if it's on the side of the street that you don't have um retail uh opening up onto the street. If it's a park or something like that, you could just do a pathway as opposed to the full fourteen-foot wide sidewalk with trees and all that kind of crazy stuff. So take around Eden, you might have a pathway around the park instead of the the full street sidewalk and all that. Plantings, uh no changes on forty-nine or fifty. Or fifty-one, fifty-two. So I don't know that we got a a big chance to talk about this last week. When we did have a discussion about this. Someone's in the other room turning lights on. When we did have a discussion about this uh a month ago, one of the things you guys tasked me to do is. Let's see if we could do, if we could all offer more alternatives than just a thirty-foot wide um pedestrian right-of-way. Cutting through lots, uh maybe it could be reduced down to fifteen feet and. Um in that conversation, you guys wanted to make sure it was clear, we're only talking about the form-based zones, we're not talking about everywhere else, so. Um what I did was I added two types, so each development, uh if you're looking at line s- six twenty-five. Each development shall be configured so that the maximum pathway or sidewalk walking distance between pathway or sidewalk intersections is four hundred feet. Okay, line six thirty-one. For guys is, let's see, pathway shall connect.
Wait, so then again, each development shall be configured so that the maximum pathway. Or sidewalk walking distance, you know, pathway or sidewalk intersection is four hundred feet. You're saying there's an intersection every four hundred feet?
A pathway intersection every four hundred feet.
Pathway intersection, not intersection road.
It might be a pathway and road intersection, so we do define what an intersection is, but. Uh where a pathway crosses a road, that's a, that's an intersection, where a pathway crosses another pathway, that's an intersection. So trying to get your um pathway blocks to be a little bit smaller. If you've got mid-block crossings with sidewalks, it's a pathway block, uh you already got it covered. Uh the mid-block crossings that are here in the middle block are three hundred and thirty feet from the intersection. One block is six hundred and sixty feet long, just be clear on the dimensions here. So four hundred shouldn't be hard to beat, but if we have like a weird or oblong shape um uh block that. A mid-block crossing tends to be more than four hundred, then you might have to have another mid-block or a uh pathway uh built in there. It makes sense? This doesn't just apply to the um commercial and multifamily either, this also applies to the residential. So when you're creating your residential streets and street blocks, you'll have to put in those pathways.
Seems excessive for a rural area.
This is only in the form-based area.
Right, we're not rural anymore.
Not in the form-based. So we can always make it not apply to certain street types, so as you get further outward. I mean, estate lot residential, that's three acre lots, probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have one every four hundred out there. Um does it make sense on a rural residential, it's one uh acre per lot?
You're not gonna have four hundred feet anyways. Unless it's a really long skinny law. You're not gonna want it going right through your lawn, I'd say anything less than one acre, yeah, I'd require it with anything. Above an acre.
You wanna expand? Instead of four hundred, maybe in the one acre, you go bigger?
What it, what it, what it says is you'd be required to do it.
Yeah, I remember this, this is a big discussion, literally.
If you don't have it, then it's not required to do it. So if you got a three acre parcel, you're not required to be a pathway. Which is what you want if you're buying a three acre lawn, you don't want a pathway going through.
Okay, apply it to.
The one acre enough, I, in my opinion.
Not apply it to one acre.
Well, I was gonna say, that's just bad.
Take that, yeah, sorry, one acre. Less than one acre, I think it could be applied.
Okay, um there are. Uh certain, uh I was gonna say exceptions, but re- requirements, if you're looking at the street regulating plan. There are pathways um kind of predetermined in a few locations.
Which is fine, cause that's a master plan, right?
Yep, and so i- it's definitely not one every four hundred feet though, so, okay, anything less than one acre. Uh let's see, pedestrian efficiency, pathway layout. Here we go, okay. So lines of six twenty-three through six forty-two, that's just um pathways and sidewalks generally. And we got two pathway types, one is street adjacent pathway. And if you flip o, and that's uh starting on um page six forty-three. And then the other is a non-street adjacent pathway, and the street adjacent pathways, they're not running through the middle of blocks, right? Or lots, they're just on the street, it's actually part of the street right-of-way. Um so non-street adjacent pathway, this is where I split it out.
This is where we were talking about like. Within a community kind of alleys that not.
Yeah, that's exactly right, yep, so if you're looking at line sixty-six sixty-two. Where a pathway runs between buildings or fenced lots, minimum thirty-foot wide uh pathway right-of-way is required. The pathway shall run down the center of the thirty-foot wide right-of-way, and the pathway we've already defined as ten-foot wide paved pathway like the one. Well, kind of like the one that goes around, I don't think that's ten feet in all locations, but um. The thirty feet was a a commissioner's idea because of security. And using that pathway as it runs between six-foot tall fences or buildings, whatever. But maybe there's a way we can cut that thirty feet down, so it's not so impactful to the landowner, that's what the next one down is. Pathway right-of-way may be reduced to fifteen feet if both of the adjoining lots or parcels are or will be seen a family residential. And are deed restricted to only allow solid fence that is no greater than four feet or only allow fence that is thirty percent open with openings evenly distributed.
Okay, if that's, if you can see through it, is what you're saying, okay, and that's because of the potential for crime. And like loitering and.
Yeah, I, eyes on, um, yep.
Are these thirty foot, or they just are the pathways, or can they be used for utilities too?
They could be used for anything, yeah, anything underground, yeah. Uh the function of them for people, well, the active function would be for pathways, but the passive function would definitely be for anything that can go. Utilities or drainage systems, yeah, I guess it's all utilities. Great spot for them.
I remember this, and then the, and the landowners, the homeowners are responsible for maintaining. Cause that was a big discussion, the vegetation, the trees, the plants, the whatever.
If it's the thirty foot, if it's the fifteen foot, well, they're probably still required for that, but it's, you know, we're talking about two and a half feet on either side of the path.
Yeah, cause you're still gonna have a ten foot, yeah, okay.
If I'm the homeowner, I'm putting rock out there.
Sure, yeah.
And.
The pathway, the one, homeowner puts rock, connects and puts a lot of vegetation.
Yeah, uh there is.
They have to maintain it.
Yeah, uh so if they wanted to run their drip irrigation systems or the sprinkler systems over the fence or under the fence, or maybe they don't have a fence. And go right up to the pathway and maintain that, just like um some of these lots where the grass goes right up to the asphalt. Um that's all public right, well, a lot of that's public right-of-way, but they're just maintaining for the aesthetic purpose, and they could do that if they wanted to. And you might see these pathways go thirty feet, fifteen feet, thirty feet, fifteen feet, I don't think it's gonna be weird to see that, because those fences that buffer that are gonna be see-through. So you're gonna have an open area where you got lots of public accessibility, we got a closed-in area, but it's not really closed in. Cause you could see into the yards, you know, people in the yards can see out, so. Gives you the option, if it's thirty, to have the private backyard. The other one, not as private, but at least another, people aren't getting hurt in there. Okay, we'll have lots of opportunities to tweak it too when we find problems. Okay, um turn the page to fifty-five. Okay, this is a new, um, so what I did was I put the uh legend for each. Street regulating plan just up at the very front, uh on line six eighty-two. That's right, so let's, sorry, sorry, people online. If you're online and having a hard time following up, this um is available on the planning division webpage. So just on the main page, you could see off to the side where the packets are based on the um the calendar. Okay, sorry, we're getting there, come on. Okay. So line legend, this just includes the different color for large lot residential and uh the new medium large um street. So nothing has changed from that. On the maps, all the maps that you see on the screen, not in your packet, have been updated for color.
With the new medium large.
Mm-hmm, so you can see, and it used to be yellow, if you look at your map, you'll see yellow kind of on that periphery that shows that twenty thousand. Now that's kind of like, like that yellow-green color instead.
Is there still yellow?
No, yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause if there was yellow, it would be the medium large, and no. I shouldn't say nobody, there were a few people concerned about dropping the twenty thousand down. Leave it as is, no changes. Okay, let's see. In these sections, I'm not including a legend, just to, just to clean it up, so it's easier to flow through, and just having the legend to be at the front like I just showed you. Um so looking at the screen, you can see um Eden area. This is the only one that has the legend on the map, and that's just an overall map of that area. And then you got, just your zoom in of Old Town or Newtown, excuse me, and then next one down, you zoom in of Nordic.
So you're removing this?
Yeah, just, yeah, removing that particular graphic from every section, redundant. Trying to standardize the line work uh across all the maps as well, which you you didn't see in the packets that you guys had. But you will see on these maps here, um so whether you're in Western Weaver or the Ogden Valley. This line means this, this, you know, this line is this street, this line is a trail, this line is open space, um using similar colors and all that. Okay. Sorry, okay, yeah, this was the map, so originally when I came to you guys with this, I had made a couple minor tweaks to the Nordic uh valley map. Related to this property up in here, um I've turned it back to what it was. I'm probably still gonna recommend to you guys to change it um as I had proposed. But I'll, I'll put that kind of as a side item, and if you want the map to change, then you just make a part of your motion, send to the county commission. If you don't wanna change, you wanna leave it as is, and we can address that specific change at another time, we can do that.
Say that one more time, you're proposing changing the color on this map.
Sorry, yeah, so, so the colors are, one color is already changing, all the colors that were previously bright yellow. Are changing to a a green-yellow color.
Well, we've already approved the Nordic Valley project.
It doesn't. Yeah, and it doesn't change any of the street types, it's, it's just, the twenty thousand square foot is no longer yellow, it's now green. There were, there weren't enough shades of yellow-orange to fit in something else that can actually see it on the page and on the screen. And there were plenty of more greens, so it's just, it's a weird problem that.
So you were just referring just to the colors, you were talking about coming back with that street change thing that.
So. I've, no, I, I will show, so I'm gonna come back in the public hearing and recommend um that. The Nordic map do be changed the way that I had originally reflected. Street configuration and the color.
Do you remember, like a couple meetings ago? Or was it a workshop, might have been a workshop, and that's why we said it, we thought it needed to be in a public hearing.
Yeah.
And you said.
And then there was a small.
I don't know if the developer will on this one.
And then we kind of decided.
This one doesn't.
Let's just not touch that.
This particular change doesn't necessarily benefit any particular developer. Um it's, it's more to follow the topography of the land. That's right, so that map change, the Eden map change, I'm not gonna make any recommendations on, it's gonna stay as it is. Until that particular landowner comes in.
Right.
But the changes that I had recommended in the, for the Nordic map, which didn't sound like you guys had any issues on the front end, it was just. Yeah, the issue that I, I think you guys had was, well, if we change this map, or if we don't change this map, we probably shouldn't change this map. And I'm still gonna recommend you do it, but I'm gonna make it very clear in the staff report and in the motion. Yeah, you guys could do what you wanna do, put it in or put it out, and I'll send it to the county commissioners with your guys' recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, and just to be clear, the street reconfiguration, when we did this, we didn't take specific slopes in mind. And we should have.
You're talking about the original one?
The original, yes, and.
And now the new one that you will be coming to us with a proposal does.
Yes.
That was the point, okay.
That was the point, yeah, and it's not driven by a particular applicant, even though the applicant has had a discussion about it. That applicant is actually moving forward with um their project outside of the form base, and so they're, it's not even gonna affect them. Oh, okay. So, and it doesn't change density, it doesn't do it, it just moves the way the lines go on the, on the mountainside. Um you can see if you flip over, you can see the proposed West Weaver configuration. Which might be fun to look at if you care to look at it, it's actually quite a bit larger of an area. Um than any of the village nodes that you see in the Ogden Valley, but they're trying to put city with their, or out there at some point in time. Okay, flipping over. I didn't, yep, I haven't proposed any changes. Um except for, from what you guys have previously read, except for the highlighted area on page sixty-eight. So um Tre- Trevor mentioned that uh in one of the meetings about, I think it was a month ago, so two, three meetings ago. He said, this whole thing is changing, that's not the intention. The TDR section is intended in the Ogden Valley to be the same. We're just splitting it out for Western Weaver and Ogden Valley and finding good junctures to s- to make that split, and so what it used to be was. Well, we didn't even have to say in the Ogden Valley, it was just, TDRs are gonna work this way, now that we're working in the Ogden Valley and the Western Weaver with TDRs. Uh we've got an A, which is transfers generally, we've got a B, Ogden Valley Planning Area Form-Based Zone Transfers. That's on line six thirteen, and then C line, uh I'm sorry, eight thirteen, and then line C, eight twenty. Western Weaver Planning Area Form-Based Zone Transfers, so that's how you could see the, the. The density ratio, the bonus ratio is only under the Western Weaver transfer section. Transfer section. So if you look at the transfer ratio under the Ogden Valley, it says one to one. So there is no incentive offered.
Except for resorts.
Outside of form base, yeah, outside of the form base.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because the transfer instead of matching unit for the definition that we read at the very beginning, that only applies to the D R R one zone. So there is potential for resorts to get density transfers. Or a bonus density transfer.
Resorts. So I said just resort.
The resorts in the D R R one zone specifically, so not even Nordic, Nordic is under this one here. Okay. And then the addition of the banking, um and I know Jeff, you're uh opposed to that, do we have any other? Folks who are.
So I I. If I could just take a minute, because I.
Please.
You know, I would miss if I didn't, I I took a. Close look two or three times, but the Ogden Valley General Plan. I mean, I read the whole thing when I first. Joined the sport and. Then I read it again, and my first impression was this, the whole thing is generally light on details. Uh, but.
It's a general.
Generally, but chapter three seemed to be. The one place where there were a range of details. And I noticed. That a lot of those details were just not. Brought into the the T R D process, even though they were referenced there in some specificity, so. Uh, it's it's my impression, and I remember, I don't remember the details, I went to some of the meetings, but then that. There must have been a lot of effort to come in, to come up with a lot of those details that found their way into the document. But they're not finding their way into. The actual uh code. And when I look at this, the T R process, and and I look at, you know, everything I've been exposed to. And kind of think, well, what in twenty years are we really gonna be? Held accountable for. Probably ninety percent of it, not much, but this is the one thing twenty years from now that's gonna matter, I think, in the valley. Especially in the context of the last meeting where water and sewer was talked about a lot, we've talked here about the uh state requirement. For a water use conservation plan, we talked last meeting about. Very significant limits on transportation. Roads that aren't really gonna change, the state's not gonna run in and. Redo the roads in advance of there being big problems. And the overall infrastructure. Limitations and the cost to put in a sewer system in the valley and that runs across the valley and a culinary water system and all of that. So, you know, you look at all of that. And you look at what was written. That's often referred to up and down the chain in Weaver County as the plan we have to adhere to, but yet we're we're not, so I saw. Several areas that and and maybe some of these are in, I just don't know it, but for example, the first one is. In here, it says that this this commission should approve or has to approve every single T R. Is that in or out? Out, okay, well, it's in here, so.
The ordinance, yeah, this is law, that's guidance.
This is, but. You know, and I and I, this is again, just my opinion, when. When this is held out by the county commission and others as the Bible, so to speak. Um, and then you disregard it, it takes the credibility away from this completely.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
So I do think that. The committed, the this. Board should review and approve each one, there's not gonna be thousands. Not gonna be hundreds probably. Uh, the second one is, I don't think. And it doesn't say so explicitly in here. But I don't think third parties should be involved, I don't think realtors, brokers, people should be out there drumming up business and taking a cut. Away from the land sellers. On these transactions, in here, there's language that talks about. Creating a market, and I think there's a, there are specifics in here about how to create a market. And that's basically a a registry, and because it's such a limited situation. In my mind, that registry would work, it would match those that want to sell, those that want to buy.
Yeah.
Without allowing people to get in there and create. Situations for their own profit. That maybe shouldn't exist in that timeframe, if sellers don't want to sell, why should there be people out there trying to convince them to sell so that third party can make a buy?
Gotcha.
In my opinion. Um, I think it, I think maybe you told me, because this references. These transactions should be in the public record, that's easily accessible, and that's.
In there, right, yeah, in fact, here, let me um.
Oh, that's okay if it's in there. So I also think that. In here, it talks about. That. Development rights shouldn't be sold. From everywhere. And if a. Piece of land. Big or small, has already given up their. Development rights, whether it be the conservation easement. Or through somebody buying a piece of land that they sign up for when they buy it, that they can't subdivide it. Then they can't, those lands should not be subject. To T D R. The monastery is the best example. That land is being farmed right now. They've given up their development rights to put it in. And that land or other similar lands. Which will probably hopefully continue to be farmed, should not be able to then. Sell development rights that they don't really have anymore, since they've given them up. And probably. Most or as bad would be the large five hundred plus acre. Um, private developments that are out there, that a couple of them I know are desperate for money. Like, and a couple million dollars on the table for selling. T D Rs off four hundred acres that are restricted already by the owners. But if they can find a way to monetize that, to put in a new road or. Pay a little amount of debt or whatever. They're probably going to do that, and there's probably a lot more of those that I'm aware of, and I think that. Very much is detrimental to what this intent. What this was.
I agree.
Uh, banking, which I know is in here, and we've discussed banking is contrary to this, in that you're. You're creating something, um, an artificial situation. Whereby you're not helping the landowner, they can still sell or not, if there's a buyer, they can sell, just like any other. Transaction, if there's a buyer, they can sell, they can develop themselves, they can do whatever they want. Banking. Creates an artificial scenario that may. Put pressure. On some of these other realities sooner. Than the valley can withstand them, specifically the infrastructure problems, the road problems. And the other limitations in the valley, if you let this play out over twenty thirty. Or more years, some of these things will work themselves out, some won't, but if you try to. Punch it all in. And you put the benefit to developers, if you give the benefit to developers, which I firmly believe banking is nothing but a benefit. For developers. You're gonna create some. Traction where maybe that traction ought to come a little bit further down the road, doesn't mean a. A landowner, a farmer can't decide to do whatever they want with their land in the meantime.
Right.
It just means you're gonna put less pressure. On some of these problems, especially the state mandated water conservation. Uh, planning. Uh, density bonuses, we talked about that, where. Um, you know, sixty, I read this week, sixty eight percent of all the water used in Utah is used to water. Hay, farm hay. So if you. Are still, if you have a piece of land, you transfer the density bonus out or the in building. Uh, the ability to build out, but you're still watering hay. Produce hay. But yet you're building homes somewhere else with. That development right. You're completely contrary to what the state wants you to do with respect to managing water use. Find to make to produce hay. But then building homes on top of that, where you're still watering hay and giving the developer a bonus. Is once again, you're handing the bone, the the developer. A cash bonus in it, in reality. And you're being contrary to what the state wants with water management. And at the same time, you're penal penalizing everybody else who might have to change their irrigation system, because there isn't. Enough water to meet what the state wants to do, even though there's plenty of water around, the state still has these mandates. And then the last thing I noted here, that is very specific in here, and this is one of the things where they actually. Wrote down. Back then. And it made it all the way through the process that. Development rights shouldn't be transferred off of certain types of land, and they said thirty percent slopes. Wetlands and some other, I forgot what the other category was. And that makes sense to me, because sure, you could build something on a thirty percent slope, but who would? I mean, in reality, if you want to, fine, build it. But why, but no one really is going to spend the money, they're just gonna sell the. The development right, because they can, even though it was recognized here by everybody involved. The county, the. The author, the the public, that it makes no sense to do that. And it's contrary to all these other. Realities. Anyway, those are my observations with this, banking, I know banking's in here. And I just see banking as a big bonus for developers. And it's gonna put traction in areas in development that may not ought to have traction right now.
Yeah.
It doesn't take away anybody's right to not to bank. No one bought. A piece of farmland and is a professional farmer out there, because they thought someday they'd be able to. Sell development rights into a land or into a bank, that never, I mean, that's not.
Nobody even thought about that.
Yeah, so.
It's a new right we're creating.
It's a new right, it's being, or a new situation that's being created for the benefit of developers. It doesn't take anything away from any landowner that I can see, it just. Accentuates everything and makes everything. Happen potentially more rapidly. And more easily, especially if third parties get involved.
Yeah, let me ask you a question on the third party, do you, do you want the ordinance to specifically? Disallow third party involvement?
I don't know how that would be written, I don't know what the legalities or what your typical way to approach something like that, but I think. The language in here with respect to creating a market seems to me, because it's such a limited situation where you have a. You know, a listing of people who are interested in. In selling into, selling their T D uh development rights off. And buyers would know where to go to look, who's interested. That would seem to me to be. More powerful than having brokers knocking on doors and trying to.
Yeah.
Earn a a cut out of these deals.
Yeah, I agree, and um.
But I don't know how you would write that, so.
Well, we, so on the. Pull this up. On the subject of having like a clearinghouse or a place where people could go and look at what is for sale, what is available for sale.
Who's interested in talking about.
Yeah, so we've, we've actually got a parcel on the map that or parcel layer on the map that shows that, and this is ten year old data. And so we're gonna figure out how to do um data management on. Uh, on this, figure out whether or not these guys are even really willing, but as we get willing buyers. Out calling these guys to fi- figure out if they really do want to sell, I think a lot of this has a conservation easement on it now, but at the time. Whenever this layer was created, it didn't. So buyers want to buy, and they go to one of these guys and say, they're, they're not willing to sell anymore, and we just. Give them a call and find out and then take them off the list, so just a little bit of management of that shake file, which we could do.
If we're treating these rights as a tangible thing, do they get taxed if you own them in a bank?
If it's revenue, uh, I think it'd be at the point that you create revenue, I don't know how the.
Well, even the county, if you're taking the density right off the plan, and it makes it less valuable, but it goes into a bank. One guy has two hundred on them. Makes your property less valuable. Still paying the taxes, all your density rights in this pretend bank that he's made up.
So in that particular case, what the assessor's office is doing is they're assessing the offer. Um, potential development ability, if if that's wiped out, your your assessment goes down a lot more.
But then the taxes, and then some guys pretend bank just went on. What density rights, which should be.
The right to put a lot of.
Traded as a tangible thing.
Yep, so they may be paying more taxes if it's banked on that.
That's always somebody's actually gonna do.
But they're not attaching it, they're not, so it's just in there.
The only way to bank, the only way to bank according to this would be to attach it to.
Attach it to a piece of property.
I just, I can't. I can't be responsible for um holding the uh.
Certificate?
Yeah, the table that lists all of them, I mean, we're gonna lose them.
You're saying, you're saying attached to the original property that came from?
No, no, it'll be attached to the property where.
Receiving.
So remember, you can, we we were discussing that, but it hasn't happened, so I'm gonna say it, like it's. What is, but it's not. In order to. To bank or purchase, you had to be in a form base, because we had that discussion of like, well, if I want to get out of this market. Then I need to get my home rezoned into a form base, because you had to live in a form base in order to. Start buying.
You have to live, you have to own the property.
You could own a one acre. Piece of property, and put a thousand development rights on that one acre, even though you could ever use them.
Right, exactly, because you just.
You just have to house them there on paper.
But then they have to also do the legwork to cut down that information, which.
Right.
Which not only doing that person, which is yay for that person, but not so yay for the homeowner who sold a development right, because. They're gonna have to fight with the tax assessor to lower their assessment.
And and I.
It doesn't seem like it's set up yet, ready.
I'm I'm more worried about. Accelerating development artificially before. The valley can withstand that, and in the face of at the same time, the state saying you need a. To have a a legitimate water conservation plan. And making major changes in the valley in ways that could be detrimental. And it could really change the uh the economics, property economics, if too much of this happened.
Yeah.
In a way that isn't. Um. Staged. Appropriately, and to the detriment of. Of land. Holders who's who's. Sell too soon.
Yeah.
You know, if there's somebody out there saying, I'll buy them all now, just like everything else, ten years from now, chances are. Property will be worth a lot more in ten years, and if they're banking it somewhere. Someone stands to make a fortune if they have funding to do that, and the farmers are gonna lose out, they may still be farming. But they'll lose some valuation.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see that happen. I could take the banking or leave it, I'm not. I'm not sold on it being the right thing to do, um, it's in there, because I think it was brought up by. Commissioners, or it was brought here, I can't remember. They like the idea, um, but I think that the context of that discussion is important, because uh they're trying to figure out, all right, how do we make? T D Rs work. Um, and so I I think if they heard it through this context, they'd see it a little bit differently.
What if you, what if you look at it like this, like say they're in a. Mixed juice multifamily, say somebody buys a piece of property, mixed juice multifamily. You know, maybe they're. Based off their lot size and whatever they purchased, maybe they're allowed to have so many T D Rs. I mean, because if you just have a guy that has a one acre lot, he wants to get a thousand T D Rs, that makes zero sense, because he can't put a thousand. You know, units on that anyways.
He might not even be able to put one.
He might not even be able to one, yeah.
But he owns them. He controls. All significant to. You know, he controls a lot going forward.
But if you have a piece of property in the form base, so. But you could actually do something local T D Rs, it would make more sense to sell it to somebody. That could actually use them in there, that would stop some of the banking, I think in Patrick's, your property can hold, yeah.
And then that's not, that's not banking, that's just buying them to use.
I mean, you'd be banking them for a time, if you, you'd have to acquire them while you were purchasing the land to make sure you could get them.
Yeah, but that would be, I wouldn't consider that banking, I would just. That's just buying them to use, whether you use them now or.
Did we decide once they're there, they're there?
If it's inside the form base, it's in, it stays inside the form base, it can't be moved out.
Couldn't it be moved to another form base that I thought we talked about?
I think we did say that.
If he puts a thousand, then all thousands gotta be using the form base, or they're just gone.
The thing. The thing that banking that bugs me is, and we talked about this months ago, but is the relationship to. Right, so. You know, you buy a big piece of property, it comes with a bunch of development rights. And you decide, instead of just using them all and making whatever money that goes, you do.
Large lots.
Large lots, exclusive aspirational type homes. You're selling them at a higher price point, you get a benefit from doing that. It's a choice that you make in your business model, you know, in your business plan, to then get to take the rest of those. And go build a bunch of condos somewhere else. Seems a lot like double dip, you get, you get the best of both worlds, and if we are like the last meeting workshop discussing. Ways to pump the brakes because of all the difficulties, the traffic and the water and all this other stuff. One quick way is to say, when you buy these rights, you have the choice of what to do with them, but you don't get to hang on. And go use them again somewhere else, you you do with the property what you want to do with it. And based on the business plan you have, whether that's. Exclusive aspirational or. Affordable housing density, that's your business plan, that's what you. Affordable housing density, that's your business plan. That's what you wanna do.
You know, maybe to push back on that a little bit, when you buy the initial chunk of. Land, you are not only buying the potential for the million-dollar homes you're talking. Ten million dollar homes you're talking about.
What are you talking about, million dollars?
You're you're buying all of the development rights that go with that. So your your outlay initially includes all of those rights to develop. So if you bought ninety acres in an A A B three zone and you knew that you were only gonna build ten lots of. You know, nine acres each, then the remaining. Twenty lots you could you could sell or, you know, that's a valuable resource. Now, whether that's banked or not, that's an open question and, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't wanna wade into that conversation. That's a that's a whole other topic, but. The idea that someone would just buy a piece of property and then. Wave off all of their their rights because they got some profit on that, that doesn't seem right either.
My business plan could be include the double dipping part of it.
Exactly, I mean, you paid for that potential when you bought the original.
That's that's different than what I said with respect to primarily existing large tracts where. The developer and the individual lot owners have already. Agreed not to subdivide. So they've already, they're in knowing. Whatever, if they bought a fifty acre lot, that's it, one building and fifty acres, no more.
They bought a fifty acre lot with the understanding and agreement, CCNR, whatever it is with other landowners, that will not be.
Subdivided.
Shouldn't be development rights.
Right, those shouldn't be able to be then. You know, rethink it, trick out your CCNR and walk away with a couple million dollars.
Um let's let's address that one first and then let's go to banking, um because my. Laptop's about to die and I want you guys to see what I wrote.
I brought one down.
It just means that. So it just means that I have to leave it on. Means the meeting doesn't.
I mean, give me that back, that's mine.
And I'm not arguing that that's the way to go or whatever. I'm just saying, you know. There are a lot of different ways. We're creating something new, and so we also can just slow down with it. We can do one without doing, you know. Two and three.
Yeah, so I want I wanna hold the subject that that you're talking about, um because I think that deserves its own individual consideration. Um let's let's touch on um the one with restrictions and covenants and Corlin, I'm probably gonna ask you to uh weigh in. Did you get that? Okay, okay, good, so I. I sent the uh an email over to Cortland to look at this a little bit deeper, just see how much we can be involved, but. Um adding in language to uh transferred density. Um transfer density online seven ninety-six or starting on seven ninety-six at the very end of that paragraph. Uh I I really like what um. Uh what you're talking about, Jeff. Um so I added in a sentence that says, private contracts, covenants, restrictions, conservation easements, or any other document held by a third party. That restricts or prohibits certain development rights from being developed shall be considered a previous. Uh reduction of residential development rights. Provided, however, that the development right reduction is clearly stated in a recorded document and the third party is willing to enforce it. So one of the reasons why there's that caveat at the end is because if the county starts getting into these um CCNRs and we have to start interpreting what it says. That's when we start to get named in those lawsuits. Those CCNRs are not written under the same rules that ordinances and development agreements have to be written. Ordinances and development agreements, any ambiguity, any um error, uh potential error of interpretation has to be favored to the the landowner. Um whereas those CCNRs, those are just contracts amongst landlords and so um. Sometimes they tend to be a little more vague.
So in that language. Would that prevent? You, would that allow you to change your CCNR?
Yeah.
Make the sale and then change it right back.
That's the one I want Corlin to look at.
Because that's where the problem.
Yeah, it doesn't solve the the bigger issue that you're looking at, right? So.
If you could have language that said that if. Property was acquired with that in place. Then it stays in place. The private covenant, the private covenant existed. And it was recorded. Then that erases your ability to sell.
Okay, I I like it. Um I've asked Portland to kind of look into um ways that we could potentially do it. We're gonna have to have a method of potential appeal um. Otherwise, everything would go to the district court on that. Give you a just a aside story, uh just to help you understand the concern. Green Acres uh subdivision uh down on the south end of the valley or. East end of the uh end of the valley, they had an agreement with the original developer, um so the original developer actually made a great an agreement with themselves and then. Sold the development to one piece at a time, that the property to the uh above, driving through the Green Acres um. Green Hills, sorry, not Green Acres. Yeah, the canyon, driving up that that canyon dead-end road, um that they could do up to a certain amount of homes above that. And um the CCNRs specified, you know, what was what you could do and what you couldn't do, but the CCNRs weren't written. Using the same language that the ordinances were written, and so the gentleman who owns the above that was thinking, all right, it says sixteen residential units. The county also allows uh recreation lodges on these properties, and so um I'm going to build. Uh commercial buildings that are built to the International Building Code instead of the International Residential Code. There's still gonna be residences that kind of operate like commercial lodges. Yeah, and so basically what we said was, you know what? We're reading the or the, we're reading your CCNRs and. It's not quite clear what exactly the original contract was for and um anyway, uh. I think it was Green Hills. Green Hills appealed uh that and ended up going to district court. Was that a district court thing and named the county uh on that, and we were able to get unnamed. Um because our specific uh approach to that was to not read or interpret the. The agreement. We just said, to the extent that you are allowed to do these things. Then here are the stipulations on your permit, and then I think Green Hills won, right? On that one, I did that. I think they won, yeah. So basically, we're able to prove that, no, our original agreement said residences, not lodges. Uh the uh the owner. The at the sanctuary also said, it said. Sixteen dwelling units. It didn't say I can't do other uses that the county code allows in that zone, and that's where the lodges came in. It's like, hey, I'm not doing more than sixteen residences. I'm actually doing sixteen lodges.
The house that's up there is for sale as a house right now.
As a house without shares or whatever.
All of the other uh buildings that either were proposed, I don't know if they've been built. They're all gonna have to be residences because I think the judge um made a determination on that. If he came to the county and said, I wanna do a bunch of lodges up there, actually, I don't know, we might have changed the code to not allow lodges, but if he. Did say, I wanna do a bunch of lodges up there, we would probably have to approve it. But that doesn't mean that he's entitled to violate the CCNRs. So I'm gonna have Corlin um look a little deeper, like how we can craft language. To say that.
And and. Private developments uh under CCNR is would be different than. Conservation easements or other. Programs.
Yeah, um. And a conservation easement, so I I just kind of grouped it together so that we could say um. If there is that restriction on those development rights, they just don't exist. And this sentence here, uh or this this last sentence that we added in, it's intended to. Um it's intended to apply to. For uh from another lot or parcel that has an available residential dwelling, right, so. If you go to uh someone who doesn't have another residential dwelling, you know, right, because one of these restrictions exist. Then that shouldn't be counted. We shouldn't be able to say that you could go ahead and buy that, uh because there's already already a restriction there. So we're gonna look at that. How do we make the county kind of a third party to all those agreements? Hopefully, we can just write an ordinance that says. If your CCNR is at from at this date here. Your CCNR said you can't do it, you can't change your CCNRs. To say you can make those trades. So that's that subject. We're gonna try and get it as tight as we can on that. The other subject is um. Somebody goes in, they develop, develop uh bigger lots than what the zone allows them for, sell them at a premium. And then sell the development rights also at a premium, double dipping.
But you would do that upfront before you sell. The land to an individual.
Yes, so the commissioners actually had a good conversation, good long conversation about this and Jenkins. The three of them. Weren't speaking the same language through the whole conversation, but Jenkins' position at the time was um. The subdivision should wipe it all out, and I had to walk Commissioner Jenkins through, well, if you've got a ten acre lot in a in a three acre zone. And you have one dwelling on that lot, and you wanna subdivide it to create two more lots for for two more dwelling units. There's nothing in our ordinance right now that would prohibit that from happening. Um and he said, well, they don't have frontage. They might have frontage, depends on how wide the frontage is, and if they don't have frontage on a street, they could build a street. To give them frontage, and so the right still is there, just the just by virtue of subdividing the land does not eliminate that right. If we were to. Rezone the property at the time that they posed the subdivision and downzoned it, so they had less development rights. That would stick. That would be a sticky, something that we could do.
But couldn't they still in advance of if those in the subdivision sell the rights they felt they wouldn't need?
Yes, and so that'd be the other side of it, and that's where the commissioners landed, basically said, let's adopt an ordinance that says. If it's been platted, you cannot resubdivide. I think that's gonna come to blows at some point in the future when somebody says. I could have put more lots on here, commissioner, and change the rule. I think that is what's gonna happen if we do adopt it, but maybe we start there. But they could wipe all those development rights out before they start plating their ten acre lots. And so when I say wipe them out, they could sell all the rest of them that they're not planning.
Yet, yet, because we haven't adopted.
We have. Sorry, Ogden Valley has a TDR ordinance that is adopted. It's all the black line that's in there.
Sorry, there's a lot of red and blue.
It's not a big ordinance.
Okay. Um so they can sell them.
If they have a lot in the form-based zone.
Which there is one.
So they.
Basically, they're useless. You're you're. No.
Okay, um yeah, there. You wouldn't be able to sell anything until you had a piece of property in that form base zone, and then you can transfer it to that property. Now, the way that the current um ordinance is written, banking isn't written in there. That would be.
But we're adding, we're creating a new.
If we adopt it, right, if you guys wanna move forward with it.
I'm going with no banking.
Okay.
I like the idea that we could say no now and say yes later. Like, if we say yes now. This is what we have, and then you've got lawsuits being like, you said I could, you know, if we say no now, we can always add it.
Yeah. What if it was uh say no now, that's it's coming up again. I like it. Um what if this particular component, because I wanna get back to your other, the other subject of every TDR, there needs to be specific deliberation on. What if this particular component, there was specific deliberation? If they wanna bank. Then the planning commission has to make specific deliberation on whether or not it's being brought from appropriate land and transferred to appropriate land.
But it shouldn't be able to be taken from non-appropriate land anyway, so why does it, why do we have to say?
I'll tell you in just a second. Cause I I I don't wanna dive into that subject yet, wanna space this out a little bit.
Numeric criteria where you could say no without recourse, such as that piece of property can't house. You know, that many building.
Yes. So we could do it all through the rezone. Or we can come back and make it a legislative decision afterwards, which I guess technically we could already do it through a development agreement. I'd just rather not have all these development agreements hanging out there. Cause I could tell you this, but if somebody's banking. And it's in a development agreement that I can't track easily, it's gonna get lost, and then someone's gonna show up at the table with a thousand development rights that we didn't realize.
Are you, are you guys going to track the development rights?
We already are. Yeah, so uh we were here the day that we were looking at the ledger. So there there's a a notice that runs with the land that has a ledger attached to it, and every transfer, every. Transfer or receipt of a development right would be tracked on that ledger.
So is that like a? What's the word? It's like the water.
Yeah, and where the.
You track all that, because you're not tracking water, right?
No, we're, so we would have to track that. Um that's one of the reasons why I don't want an ethereal bank, a paper bank. I want it to be. On the county record in the county.
That's what I was saying, will they record, will re-record the property every time that's your rights come out?
Yes.
So that it shows the proper amount.
That's right, and.
And the new one should be recording with every new right they acquire.
Yeah, every, every send, yeah, every send uh has that agreement that gets recorded, the property every receive. And if you sent and then you received, it would, you would just see every transaction that happens in there from the dawn of TDRs. You would see every single one that happened. You could trace where every single one of these rights went.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but you're not, would, because I asked you this before many moons ago, that. You're not, you don't have a list of all of the development rights in the valley. And who owns what? You are simply now tracking. A buy and a sell, that's it. And then you, and then you mark off like that, that property has sold that one off, and now that property doesn't have one, but you're not, you don't have a big picture.
We have a general big picture, and we talked about it in our 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 last meeting, um.
Really, just somewhere between. Agreed of the land divided by three.
That's right.
Right, but you're not saying like. You don't have a list of who owns what in the valley right now.
We could go through every single one, um if we did a more, the 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 more simplified process, we could go through and just say. According to our calculations now. This is what you have and go record a notice saying that. Um I don't think there's any difference between doing that and just doing them on a case by case when someone's asking to buy itself. Um and the the map will actually show on the map where those um what parcels there are, so you can click on that layer on the map. And it will actually bring their notice up, which will have the most recent ledger that's been recorded, um and so every time it updates. Uh someone will be able to see that and track that, so we'll be identifying specific parcel numbers that a right comes from and goes to. Um and the final development right that exists on that property after that transaction. So maybe we say, based on our calculations, you've got this amount of development rights on your property. They do a bunch of switcheroo's, and at the very end, we see at the bottom line, all right, how many do you have left? So very clear accounting and it gets recorded to the property so that it's it's not lost. The uh question, are you okay, Mr. Proten Chair?
I've been involved with this planning of the valley for thirty years, extensively involved with. Kirk Langford with the resort plan, and I think he pointed out. Really good, Jeff, why we were so concerned with being specific in the general plan, because we do the stable company, and here it is. And I think um. You know, the extent that anybody's on the planning commission that can bring the general plan to fruition. Is serving the community. And I think you guys are all trying to do that, so thank you, but. Here's how we saw. It it, you know, when you look, you you know who has development rights, when you go look at the land. And there's nothing on it, and it's three acres, only it's a million thousand acres. And so somebody wants to buy a a TDR and move it. Into this super high density, which by the way, nobody thought is gonna be this super high. This is. Super, super high density, this form base. But that, when that got sold. That land gets re-recorded, but now the development rights, it goes to the county recorder. With a a uh contract on that that says you can't go back in and. Rezone and recreate those again, they're gone, they're gone in perpetuity, similar to a conservation. The receiving person now receives the. Development rights on the land and it gets recorded. And if I record them and then in the form base and I sell it to you, they're still on that land, and when I get ready to sell, I get the. Value to the next person to sell them right there, and now they're there for that person to use or not use, right? And um you know, it was just that simple. But it has to be recorded. When it leaves the land that 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 you can't come back in and get a rezone, so right now through a conservation easement. Um you cannot uh. Monastery can't come and say, I've changed my mind, I'd like to throw it in the can and get rezone again and get another thousand units that you guys just took on. When, so basically move their units off the port boat round. And move them up to the mountain, they re-recorded that property. With the remaining, I don't know, it was four fifty and they transferred three hundred on the hill, they got a bonus for it. They re-recorded that property with the remaining, I don't know, it was four fifty and they transferred three hundred on the hill, they got a bonus for it. But it was also supposed to be for commercial use, which the county took away, by the way, during COVID, and took away the. The use of T D Rs for commercial use in the resort zone, which was really unfortunate, because one unit was for five thousand square feet. And, um, it made a huge difference. But anyway. You, you, you with me, then that Fort Volt Round town recorded with only a hundred and fifty units, they can't come back. And get two hundred again from the county. It's, it's not that complicated.
Good. And that's the, that's the process that's been adopted.
The banking opens up a whole new category, sport creating, that's where we don't have them, like Ogden City's supposed to. They buy a piece of property.
Upzone everything.
They can't really build there because they have a well, until the retaining rate, they got five hundred and fifty units, now they want to sell them. You know, Jeff articulated the problem with the banking. And so I, you know, I would, if, if you guys can stick close to that, that would be my recommendation. A lot of us were torn with it, we shouldn't even have a transfer of development rights, because it would be abused. And taking them off slope, moving into the, uh, form-based village. No one thought that that would take place, and no one certainly ever buy you, take it from a high-density village already. And move them to the hinterland and, and annex another big piece of property, and nobody, nobody even. Discuss something like that happening, because we couldn't even foresee that kind of an egregious move.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's one of the things that like, when we have big language, even if it's just as silly as the colors, and we say, well, but. You know, people will want to, it looks like, people are gonna do things you don't foresee, right? Like, you're gonna be, who would ever do that? Somebody, somebody will.
I'm gonna come back with specific color codes.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be a micromanager, but you do have to write these things for the worst-case scenario, because somebody will do it.
Yep. Uh, that's the primary reason they exist, is because you have poor performers. Okay, um, so banking. The, in my other thought, oh, you guys had a brief exchange that I don't think was, um. On the record very clearly, what I heard you guys kind of go back and forth on is. If somebody does transfer to a piece of property, the amount that could be built, whether or not they do build it. That's not a banking, that's just a transfer. Okay.
Yeah, that's just what, what, what the T D R is for, I guess.
Good, so that's still an option that is available.
It's not banking because you're limited to what your land can provide.
It's possible to build there. I mean, it's self-important, it's there, it's towards the bank.
So I have a question for you, and I think I maybe already asked the question several moons ago, but say you have. A certain amount of density rights, T D Rs in an already. High-density area. Why would it make sense to move it from there to another form-based? Why would it make sense to move those to a form-based village when you're already kind of taking them from an area where they shouldn't be anywhere?
Are we, are we talking about Wolf Creek?
Yes.
That exchange on Kobe.
Yeah, I, it doesn't make sense to me, because that right there, that was, all that land was purchased. And all those pieces of property have density rights to them. You're not taking those and removing them somewhere else. It doesn't make sense to me.
Yep.
While you move, you should keep them up there.
I was, uh, I was interested to see the planning commission's recommendation, favorable recommendation on that for that reason.
Could it be a timing issue?
Well, so it was, it was, there were a couple of things going on at the same time. Number one, we were talking about the bigger T D R program, which included an overlay zone. And at the time of looking at that overlay zone, we were looking at two types of receiving areas. One being the village areas, the other one being areas close to, um, uh, infrastructure. And, uh, we still had not pinned down at that point, if it's area close to infrastructure, how small lot sizes are we gonna allow in that area? And so as we were looking at this, uh, particular property, we knew, well, it's gonna be at least one unit to the acre if it's just a three acre subdivision. Uh, so if they, if they just go standard subdivision, there's gonna be a road that goes in there, it's gonna be chopped up into, into three acre lots. So infrastructure's gonna exist there. Maybe this is one of those situations of, uh, receiving in a non-village area. Um, just in an area that's otherwise being developed. We wouldn't have looked at it that way if we knew we were just gonna stick with the ordinance that's here, just only into villages. Um, so that's number one. Number two, I, I mentioned to Janet a little bit earlier today. That when that transaction happened, and we knew that they were gonna put a bunch of development there, one, one unit to three acres or whatever they could do. So, and those condos were gonna be right next to, those short-term rental condos are gonna be right next door to other short-term rental condos. It's density going where infrastructure is, and that is what the plan suggests happened. And so we thought that that was, can be fine. The owners of those condos came out very strongly opposed to it. Uh, even though they've got a short-term rental condo, right? Um, and so at that point, that's when the developers shifted a little bit. And, uh, the recommendation from planning staff was, I'd be out, and infrastructure's gonna be there, you might as well. But it happened. But the other side of it was, from that village node, that transfer that comes out and into this other area. We've got a landowner who wants to market something today, uh, using T D Rs. And if we force them to stay here, uh, versus allow them to come over here, either way. What this landowner is suggesting is that there isn't a market for T D Rs to exist right here, otherwise they'd be building the T D Rs there. But frankly, I don't know if that was entirely the case, because these units. Were getting a premium for their view, where these units in the, in the form-based village area might not have had that same kind of view. Uh, they would have been your neighbors. So I don't know, maybe they would have had a view, or I don't know, but. Uh, and so I think the, the transfer, uh, there was a lot more motivation for the developer to build these here. But let's just pretend for a second, it was just a value-for-value transfer that would have. And, and the developer was saying, there's not a market for it to go right here, but there is a market for it to go right here, where I'm already putting infrastructure. They're supporting the plan for that. It's not great. The plan says village areas are the primary receiving areas. But there's some support for that, and if this village node ever became. Uh, profitable from a marketable perspective, there's a vacuum on it right now at that point, because there are no, well, there are few units in it. And that would then, that vacuum would separate the units and.
Those density rights are essentially nonusable in that area.
How do you mean?
Like, say, so Wolf Creek, for example, I, I don't know, I don't even know the, the statistics or whatever, or what the, the numbers are. But say there's two hundred rights that Wolf Creek has, and that's essentially the bank, because they have moved, but they're not banking them, I guess, however you want to talk about it. But say they have these, but they have nowhere to use them.
That's reasonable.
Man, no, so they gotta move them, but otherwise, if, if they weren't allowed to be moved out of there, then that's that many units off the valley floor.
Yeah, that's my point. What I say, don't love being with a double dipping, is you get them retired.
Or potentially retired, yeah. Uh, there's a little bit less predictability on that potential side. But maybe that's okay. I mean, there's an element of unpredictability in a, a lot of things we do. So it's not to say that they didn't have a place to put them. They have a place to put them. There's a village core. Um, they are planning on putting units in that village core when it's marketable to do so. It's just not right now. And I've, I've seen the village core master plan, um, they're not ready to. Submit it for approval or anything like that. So they are gonna be doing residential units in that village core. They just couldn't get the other transfers that they. Especially they, not using any names. This particular developer couldn't get the other transfers from other properties that they possibly could have. Used to transfer into another area, uh, off the ground, because we didn't have. Uh, transfer ordinance that all that they could have used at that time. It's a timing issue. Now, had they come in today with the form-based ordinance that we have right now. Technically, Wolf Creek isn't in the form-based area, but I think that would have been a hard no from, from our perspective. We probably would have said, you know what? Um, Kobe is a, is a good spot for open space. The general plan shows it as green. Should be open space, and so if you're gonna use your rights to put one unit per three acres there, and you're okay to take. The small amount, the smaller amount of money that would come out of that development, fine. Um, it will ruin that open space, but at least it's not incentivizing the ruining of that open space. But that was, the more you know, had we known it would land here, we probably would have started here.
Well, hang on, because there was also a discussion, and again, this is trying to actually put it down into a code. Uh, and we've had discussions that are just discussions, they're not written into code. But there has been discussions in some of our workshops about, you know. Where people start to theorize about, well, I mean, we have seven villages in the general plan, but those are just kind of things we pick based on. Infrastructure and whatever, but if the market forces demand that this become. A place of density or a smaller, medium-sized form of dense, I mean. I remember these conversations where I was like, but I thought we were really trying to gear everything to seven, and people were like, well, but if the market demands. And so whether that's the market demanding in that area, but there was that discussion where some people were saying.
No, that's, that's absolutely right. Um, one of the risks of allowing that kind of conversation to go unchecked. And, and honestly, I don't know what kind of referee I should be in these discussions. The point of, of that kind of discussion was to make it clear to the planning commission that if the market's asking for something over here. They have to come to planning commission, the county commission through public hearing, that's been duly noticed to everyone of their neighbors and the rest of the public. That they want density over here. So like the discussion we talked about, maybe Browning Ranch wants to put a, a village node over there. Well, they've gotta come and they've gotta ask for a change that conflicts with the general plan. So the way that it should happen is they come to the county with a general plan amendment to put a village node over there. And it goes through the full, the public vetting process that the general plan goes, goes through. And then, once it's done, they go up and they ask for a form-based village to, or a street regulating plan for nature, which should be created for that area. Once that's done, they ask for it to be rezoned to that. The point of that conversation was supposed to be, we can adjust as the market demands, if we choose to do so, but we still have the control. I think the, the particular individual who was trying to have the conversation was, was trying to say, no, we shouldn't have that kind of a, a, a. Iron thumb on.
Yeah, my only concern is that, okay, we don't have measles, but we have pimples now. Like, you know, we maybe don't have them everywhere, but we have still, we did not the open space that the general plan very clearly lays out.
So, um, the open space, okay, it's, it's a good segue to that conversation. The open space of the general plan lays out, I. Not the politest way to say it. I, I, I don't think it was ever set up to succeed as open space. It was set up to succeed as one dwelling at every three acres. And if that's open space, if that's what your definition of open space is.
The general plan, that's not the way I wrote it. I wrote it as, as preserving the integrity of the valley. Understanding that people have property rights, and so therefore, let's try to let them have those property rights, move to. The already existing density points, so that the rest of the valley doesn't get.
I agree, I agree, that's what it says.
Okay.
In practice, when you're trying to make that happen, you have to create other regulatory restrictions. On what is currently allowed.
Yeah, you can't just say, we want this to be open space and leave it at that. You gotta, you gotta then change the zone or, yeah.
So what it also says is, in all the areas that are supposed to be open space. If someone comes in to ask for development, they should cluster that development. Only be allowed to cluster, no one unit to three acres, is what the general plan says. Um, in those open space areas, but if it's in one of those non-open space areas, something close to infrastructure, then, you know, maybe it could still play out at one unit to three acres.
But as, as we sort of corresponded before. Let's just say out in Liberty or out in Huntsville and those big areas, you take fifty acre piece of land, and you're gonna put. Just say five homes on that, or four homes, and you're gonna cluster those, that doesn't give the people what they want. In those areas, homes on that setting need to be big. People need large exterior buildings for whatever, they need room for horses or whatever. And so cluster development, in my opinion, only works in some places, some of the time. And you get out in the more rural settings, and generally, it kind of doesn't work. Unless you want to compromise. And I don't think the market right now anyway, at least by my eyes, wants to compromise. When somebody wants to build a home out on one of those areas, they want. Five, six thousand square foot home.
That's right.
They want a good footprint, they want a separate building for their stuff, and they want a little bit of room to mess around. And that doesn't work in a cluster. If you're on an acre, you can still build a five thousand square foot house, but you can't do that other stuff, or you're gonna be right on top of the next guy.
That's right.
Doing that same kind of stuff.
So that is what I mean by, if the plan didn't set itself up for success in terms of. Actually implementing open space. If we, so let's, let's, um, let's be driven in, in our minds and in theory, not in, in reality. Let's be draconian with the, the plan, and let's say the plan is now an ordinance. And the ordinance says thou shalt not build anything in any of these green spaces, but you still have the right to, to transfer your units into village areas. That is something that the county has the right and ability to adopt. We could create those ordinances. You have to create those extra restrictions in order to not allow what the ordinance is already super permissive on. To, uh, to create, um, same, same subjects when it comes to steep slopes. And, um, riparian areas and, um, wetlands and all that, is the ordinance doesn't say subtract them. And because of that. The landowner, he has a motivation of doing one dwelling in every three acres all over his land, his river land. Or selling, and if we do subtract out those, uh, uh, less desirable buildable areas, or non-buildable areas. Selling it with a haircut, you know, because they're not getting the same amount of development rights, they're gonna get out of just pay one, uh, one unit every three acres. Um, at the time that the plan was adopted, the one unit at everything, there were two different thought processes. One thought process was, you know what, the one unit every three acres actually is probably a good outcome. Um, and, and let's not incentivize a situation in which we're dealing with the ramifications of. Not doing one, even at every three acres, but maybe still allowing some things to transfer out, so that we aren't, it's not just one in three acres. There's a, a variety of different sizes with open spaces and, and, and all that, but the transfers being in those village areas. And those village areas should be small, because you've got units that are going out onto the open spaces. Uh, one eight to three or whatever. And then you have the other side that said, no, let's be very successful. And let's clear out the open spaces and let's put them in the villages, and neither side won. Even though we do say that this side won the conversation, this is what should happen. What's actually gonna happen, because the ordinances and the practicality of political leadership. And, um, the stress and the struggle of changing the ordinance enough to require either one side or the other to prevail. Um, you're gonna get someone to know. So when the water study, the more recent water study, the water infrastructure study, um, that was just published this last year, when that was conducted. The consultant said, right, how are we, how are you planning for growth in this area? And we told him, we said, village areas and open spaces. And they said, yeah, but that's not what your ordinance allows. And so that's true, uh, okay, well, if everything develops like our ordinance allows, then it's gonna be the opposite of what the general plan says. Let's maybe plan for three scenarios. One is high success or villages with open spaces. Um, median success, fifty percent, and low success, everything only at the acre and very little villages. Uh, and that's, that's the outcome. Those are the three scenarios that they plan for. Which, in each of those scenarios, they estimated, uh, final population of the Ogden Valley, Ogden Valley of forty thousand people. Now, we haven't quite given that estimation, uh, of forty thousand, but nine thousand dwelling units is what we're looking at. So I don't have the right answer for you guys, because it's your community, it's all policy question. Is the general plan right? Or maybe just fifty fifty is right, or maybe having opportunities and, and options is right. I would agree on the clusters in those open spaces. If we did what the plan said and forced only cluster subdivisions to be in those open spaces. We're not saving the county any money on infrastructure costs, because we still have to have a road going to each one of these pimples. Um, we're not saving, um. The aesthetic of the rural community, because we've got nine thousand square foot lot sizes. If they have a sewer system in the area, or, uh, half-acre lot sizes, um, clustered in the smaller areas. If they have a sewer system in the area or a half acre lot sizes, um, clustered in the smaller areas and the open space that gets associated with these subdivisions. Western Weaver had this way worse than Ogden Valley has it. People don't see that open space as preserved open space. They just think of it as open space because it is open. Um, they don't see it as, there's no big sign that says this, this area has been preserved from development. And so it just is part of the rural aesthetic without any acknowledgement that it's being saved. And so, uh, it's hard to acknowledge that anything good has happened in that case. Anyway, um.
In terms of your point, sorry, about the thirty, like how it's very specific in the general plan about the thirty percent grade gets subtracted out. And yet, I mean, we go through this almost every meeting. We talk about the fact that we let people do the aggregate of their property. And then bring all those rights to one developable section. So how would that work? Because this, that specifically, I mean, of, of something that's very general, something very specific that was put in was that they
Well, it included.
They should subtract it out.
It, it was a pretty simple, um, section one point two, point one. Uh, they gave the example slopes over thirty degrees, wetlands and floodplains. So every piece of property, my included, that's on a river has a floodplain. I kept, couldn't build on that floodplain. It's defined by the Corps of Engineers. Why should I be able to sell that? Uh, development right when I can't do anything with it. So that's all, all mapped out already. Uh, thirty percent slopes are easy, reasonably easy to figure out. And if somebody still wants to build on it, they can build on it if they can.
But you can't transfer.
But you shouldn't be able to transfer it nor a wetland or a floodplain. Because those are definitely not built.
And I think that that's a real easy sell that, you know, that preserves. The valley in terms of, you know, we've got.
That's open space isn't going to change.
Tiring development, in terms of trying not to have, um, what was the ten thousand more homes or whatever? Now we've got nine hundred eighty-five new homes, you know, instead of, where was I? I'm off, but my number is late, but my point is you could retire like twenty-five homes, right? Twenty-five lots. And it's twenty-five lots off the back.
It's not retired, postponed, which is fine.
Or it's just made harder to do and the likelihood of it being done is a long time in the future when maybe some of the infrastructures problems have been solved or not, and maybe the codes will be different.
And maybe at that time we say, well, never mind, you don't have those rights anymore. Maybe, yeah.
But, but that would be in my, that's some of the junk land that's going to get sold. The rights are going to get sold quick. Because why wouldn't you?
So that's something we can put in.
The risk in doing that is if someone's got the money and they want to cut up that thirty percent slope with cuts and fills, which I did see a plan, uh, on the, uh, Osprey Ranch. I did see a plan that had a couple hundred, um, homes on that hill with roads going everywhere.
You're talking about an old plan, right?
Yeah, it's not, no, it's not one that's. I don't want the county to maintain all that crappy road on a hill. I mean, let's take it, it's hard right now to do it. So if they do go for it, we've got to.
Well, the county wouldn't approve a road with a grade over a certain percent anyway. So if you could get there without being on a whatever, what's the high, eight percent, seven?
Uh, we allow up to twelve, but
Up to twelve.
On a residential street, but it can't be for longer than a certain run because fire trucks can't get out of it. Um, in my experience, that just leads to this. As opposed to this, it'd be better to see something like this if it wasn't dangerous to do. But we do have to maintain all the roads.
But those would be the last thing. I mean, those wouldn't, somebody wouldn't put the money into that if they could do otherwise.
And we could certainly write this in, um, because I think you're right. I think building on those are going to be harder. We may find someone who really can make some money off of it, and so they live with it. Once they put a road that cuts into, you know, one or two homes of an out of the side, there's, you know, a lot limiting the ability to get the rest of the development rights out of the outside. As long as we know that that is the, a potential outcome. And I'm telling you from, I'm telling you this from experience, um, I have seen spiral driveways or spiral roads going to, uh, lots, uh, above a cliff edge. So it's, it's here, it's here in the state of.
But aren't there, uh, ridgeline restrictions?
Yeah, uh, well, not on a ridge line, just going up on that.
Yeah, as long as you're off a ridge line.
Yeah.
And you can get the road approved for safety and other reasons. Maybe it's better there than somewhere else.
Yeah. Very much so. And I'm happy to write those in if you guys want to see them in there.
I do.
Okay, let's take one step back. Banking out. So everybody on the same page?
Give the other commissioners on a conversation like that together, Phil.
Yeah.
At least.
We're missing three. I'm curious whether or not we have a unanimous majority vote on banking is out. And this, not a formal vote, so it feels pretty change your mind, but.
There's, I mean, we're seeing them. Wolf Creek, they go out, maybe not two hundred or however many they want. They're just putting them wherever else. I mean, we're seeing the repercussions of banking already, that's my play.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What do they call that kind of thing? Because I know Wolf Creek's not the only one, but there's.
Just a development agreement that has.
They just have a pot.
Like both the resorts have it, the bigger resorts.
Right, that's what, so it's not.
It's called an entitlement, I think is what.
Yeah, I mean, zoning rights are entitlements too. It's kind of a loose, loose thing, but, um, it's just basically here's your pot and draw down. It's just, it's, it's hell to track.
Do we even know the ones that they're claiming?
What's that?
Do we even know the ones they're claiming are real?
Yeah, yeah, because it's very clearly spelled out in development here and the locations where they are allowed is clearly spelled.
But our new rule is going to change them to be only in form based.
If they've already got a development agreement, it's.
From here on out, if this goes through.
Well, any, any new development can do whatever they want, as long as you guys have made a recommendation. It could be for denial and the county commission has approved it. So technically, I guess another form, an, another Wolf Creek could show up without form base. But the whole point is to try and nail it down. So we're doing something a little more standardized across the board and not having to keep track of all these crazy agreements. That's kind of hard. Okay.
If we take it out, we can always put it back in.
Yeah, it's, it's written and hopefully it's written the way that it should be if it isn't. Um, okay, I'll pull it out. I'll see if Western Weaver cares. I don't even know if they're far enough into the.
But even if they cared and we
will put it in one and not the other.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what the other opinions are too. Okay. Okay, I will, let's see.
When are we going to actually implement this or vote on this or?
I'm hoping we vote on it in your next meeting, that it doesn't have to be voted on your next meeting.
If we do vote on this next, next time, they need to spend some time on this. Yeah, but it makes sense, you know.
And there'll be a public hearing, so we'll hear what the public thinks on.
When would you be getting back to us on a number of things that you said? Because you've changed language from what we have.
Um, I'm going to send what I have out to you guys immediately. I just didn't want to confuse you in this meeting.
No, that's fine. But so if we're actually going to be asked to vote on it, I mean, I want to be able to.
So my, um, minimum timeframe is seven days in advance. So, and I'll have it, I'll have it ready.
Back to TDR for one second, the, what about each TDR coming before the, this commission, at least initially until they see how these things work?
Sure.
I mean, that's, it's in here, doesn't seem like a burden because there's not going to be hundreds of them.
Right, yeah, sure.
That's my thought.
Well, so, and explain to me what, how you see that happening? Because as I understood it with the form based, it does not come just anymore because it's just, it's a straight shot. If it's in the form based, you get to just buy, sell, do whatever.
That's how it's written.
Right, and so it's coming before us and it's form based. We would have to prove it, right? It was just administered.
You would just be looking at the checklist of criteria, just like other things, to make sure it's, something isn't marginal or being presented one way when it's another way or something like that.
Yeah, so we'll have the, the, uh, at least the three limitations, slopes, uh, wetland, floodplain in there. Um, but you know, maybe there's a few more lists of criteria that the planning commission can apply to it.
That it's coming off.
And I, and I also just think it's good to have these things in the public domain.
Yeah.
So anyone who cares to know what's happening in real time and cares to pay attention, they can see and hear just like what's going on.
Floodplains, I know the county restricts a lot of building in floodplains, is that still counted? So, um, the general plan says don't count it. Uh, the county doesn't have a rule that says you can't build in a floodplain. I know our engineers would like to build a rule that says you can't build in a floodplain. It's just a lot easier, uh, less to, less mess to deal with, but
on, uh, the maps, the Corps of Engineers has the floodplain for each.
So that's, there's, there's a rub there, um. We could say if the Army Corps shows it as a flood, or sorry, uh, as a wetland.
Isn't that?
Or a floodplain, then they have to prove to us that we could do that. That'll be the easiest way for us to do it.
I was gonna say, because I know that area.
I want to guess, at least in the Western Weaver, fifty percent of what they're marking as wetland isn't wetland. And maybe it was at one point in the past and the farmer just plowed it over and filled it in and it's not anymore. And so.
But is a wetland and a floodplain the exact same thing?
No, they're both shown on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a wetland is, that's federally.
Yeah, regulated, right? Right, so if we're, if we're using wetlands as a criteria, either we're going to do the hard part, which is um, someone needs to figure out whether or not that wetland exists because the Army Corps, they're very liberal with their paintbrush. Or.
They just look at Googler.
Anything, anything that has even a shadow on it, they think is a wetland.
Looks like it might be a wetland.
Right, or we just say if it's on their map, it's not.
It would be easier to draw off their map because you start drawing different lines. You're open and it works.
They make it, say, they adjusted mine. Since I've owned the property, they moved it closer to the river.
Okay, uh, floodplain or? Okay, and there is a new floodplain map, um, that was supposed to be published last year. There's a few appeals and Sophie and us going through appeal process. Um, so we do have new boundaries. I am curious to see what this year.
The flood. As far as you can still build a floodplain.
You can. One foot above base blood elevation, that's, that's the only restriction. Well, I say only restriction, one foot above base blood elevation and you cannot displace water to the extent that it's pushing it on somebody else's property. So if you're what, well, stilts or you've got, uh, somewhere else. So you're building up over here to put your house on it and then you're carving out over here. Or you're working with another landowner to allow that displacement.
But are there septic restrictions in there too?
Oh, yeah, in floodplain areas.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the areas that would be in a floodplain are septic. Only.
Okay, um, so I can come back with that as well. We might not go to a hearing in the next meeting. I've got to really think through how to do this and make sure we got our head wrapped around it.
The other thing.
Pieces of land that don't. We actually, we don't stop people from building. You can't build on the fault line, but it's only fifty feet. It's actually, and the geologist will say in most cases, that's a safer place to build a home, but.
It's on the fault line?
Yeah, as opposed to further, because it's further away, you get subsidence and you get the way. Sorry.
I just was saying, like, if it's not a buildable piece of property because you can't have all the criteria to meet to make it a buildable lot, like it hurts for a septic. I mean, is that, is that kind of what you're getting at and stuff like that?
Having objective criteria, right. So at some point, we are asking them to design and engineer. So on the, on the extreme side, design and engineer development on your property to show us you could actually get the lots that you're saying you can get. Now, the reason why the ordinance has been written the way that it has been is because if they can design and engineer all of their lots and put, uh, uh, all of the floodplain and wetland and everything else in their back or front yard or side yard where their home can fit on the one spot, then they get all those development rights. And so rather than going through the heartache of prove to us, engineer for us that you can do this, we went to the extreme opposite side that said, well, we're just going to see. Yep, now, on the engineering side, prove to us you can do this. They're designing an entire subdivision flat, streets, all kinds of stuff. And those streets are being removed as well. What's that?
At the point of design and improvement, they're just going to plot it, they're going to build it.
Right, and so there's that extreme side, then there's the more liberal side is what our ordinance currently does, which says we're not only going to not make you engineer it, we're going to assume you're not putting any roads on it. So all of that counts in favor, in your favor to sell. Um, and maybe there's a middle ground where it's just, all right, steep slopes. Is it on a map showing this floodplain? Is it on a map showed as well that shown as wetland?
Did there be a percentage of that that could be, be taken out for protect, what you would need to service that with roads and stuff?
We used to say ten percent. And the three acre zone, I, I did analysis of, of I guess probably fifty different subdivision lots. Um, it's actually two or three percent, uh, cert by roads. Just because our three acre lot subdivision, one hundred fifty feet wide by a certain depth, it's actually quite a bit less than what we think you would need. Whereas one acre, well, that was closer to nine percent and then smaller than one acre, we're looking at between twelve and fifteen percent.
Say five, six, seven percent out of that equation.
Well, and we could just do it based off of the zone. We could say in the three acre zone, it's two and a half percent, which is about the calculation that I calculated. In a one acre zone or a half acre zone, it's, you know, higher. We could do that if we wanted to. Um, sure, we could do all those things.
Thanks for dinner again.
Yes, you're welcome. We didn't get a chance to talk about the other one, but that's okay. The other one I find is a little bit less important for you guys. Um, if you haven't already read it, private, shared private lanes, I think is the biggest thing that I'll look back to you guys. Um, so just take a look at that. We, I tried to mimic most of the la, the language from private streets that we've already adopted. Um, and for those of you that haven't been on the planning commission for very long, the shared private lanes, we had talked about it a couple of years back. We pulled back on it because there were a couple of things that the general plan suggests we do. For example, um, this idea of, uh, it was a conservation subdivision. If you give up, forfeit some of your development rights, you can have smaller cross-sections for these lanes instead. Um, we had one or two planning commissioners who really didn't like the idea of giving up development rights. And so, um, it's been rewritten to not require any giving of development rights, but also if no one's given up development rights, then that potential development is going to be there, whether it's next year or fifty years from now. And so the ability to get a road through it, a full-size road that's not a shared private lane, um, we're trying to preserve that ability if it ever is needed. So you'll, you'll see that written in there.
This is this little bullet point under work session one?
Yes. Yeah, let's skip work session one.
Okay, we could work, I was like wondering what we've done. We did work session two.
It's been hours.
But I'm like, we didn't talk about that. We didn't talk about that either. What's it, we've only done work session two?
We've only done work session.
Okay, but we did it.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The, uh, Western Weaver will have a public hearing on both of these proposals. The first one, like I said, is far more Western Weaver intensive. I don't see you guys having a big issue with most of what's in there. But once they've done their public hearing, um, next week on both of these items, um, before we flip over to the county commission, it will come to you guys. And if it turns out that you guys still need more time, we'll get something that is only specific to Western Weaver put in place and then try and smooth out the the edges.
I still think the general public, the folks in the valley will continue to struggle with the terminology Western Weaver used in anything pertaining to it about. I think that'll.
I agree.
I, I think the education point on that will be difficult. Even though it's, I guess, simple, it's probably not in the minds of most folks.
I know.
And especially people who've come here in the last ten years who aren't from around here have no idea where Western Weaver is, couldn't care less about Western Weaver, will never go to Western Weaver. To hear that used in conjunction with where they live is awful.
Yeah, I, I know. And Western Weaver kind of shares the same kind of.
So how hard is it to, I mean, you're essentially splitting it up in.
It's unnecessary. I'll tell you why. Off-putting is one thing. The cost of government is another thing. It's unnecessary. There's so many similarities that we could separate the differences just the way that we're doing it. Um, you, the way to do it is to create a city. Create a city with its own ordinances, its own government administration, its own tax base. Um, that's the way to do it. Otherwise, the county is going to need to devote its resources to do this. If we've got multiple, um, ordinances that we've got at that loss.
So if there are just ways to deal with the semantics or the presentation or whatever.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is how it's listed, yeah, in the, on the agendas. We're going to try and, uh, like Trevor mentioned, we're going to adjust the agendas. So uh, i- if you read the agenda for tonight's meeting, I followed Trevor's recommendation to the T. What do you mean?
I just closed it, um. I just closed it, um.
I detailed that hell out of that.
Then in a Western Weaver. And then as it pertains to, why don't you, why don't you just say dealing with the ordinances for blah, blah, blah? I mean, the, the minute you write. This is about Western Weaver and then underneath saying as pertains to, no one gets to that part. They see Western Weaver and they think it doesn't pertain to them. If you just say, you know, form-based ordinances. You know, it has to do with them. This, this stuff has to do with them.
It's true.
Um, I, I feel, I feel like it's misleading on the agenda. It, it might not be intentional and it, you know, and it might not be miss, I just feel like it's misleading. The minute you say. We're gonna be discussing Western Weaver's, you know, street regulations. No one in the valley cares about that. As it pertains to valley, it's like, yeah, what does that mean?
I, I can't, um, I can't help it if others aren't reading the entire paragraph. If they're looking at the first four words.
But if, this is why it's hard. It does come off like you're trying to mislead because why even write, why don't you just simply say. Discussing the four main zones. Period, because it is about the valley.
Parts.
Like, we're not voting on Western Weaver's language. We're voting on our language. Now, when it agrees, that's fine, but we're still voting on our language. When it doesn't agree, we pull it out.
I'll make a motion before the meeting.
Uh, I'll second it. I can just, yeah, I'll second it. I'll just.
Can I get a motion before the meeting?
I think you did. I, I do feel like they, the agenda should simply say argue about it.
Can it just say county courts?
Uh, no, because the state code requires it to be very specific in a certain clause. And what I'm trying to do, hey, thank you, guys. We'll see you. We'll see you guys, uh, in a few weeks.
You're very welcome.
If we don't list why we're doing it, the question we get is why are they here?
But it is about us.
It's only about us because Western Weaver started asking the question.